I'm going to call this meeting the Gloucester School Committee to order. I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, lifelong learners. And I'll ask you to join me in saying this.
Ladies and gentlemen, citizens of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oral communications, if there's anybody here who would like to address the school committee on any subject not on the agenda, this is their opportunity. Mr. Sappala.
Do you want me to go to the podium, John?
Yeah, I do, so they can see me look better on TV. I'm winging it, kind of, compared to last week. State your name. Z. Sappala, 92 Granite Street, Rockwood. I just want to start out and sort of tie up a loose end that occurred last week. When you had a recess, John, of the meeting, and we were talking a little bit, and I was saying, "You got that right," which was referring to the oral communication policy that you have, which says oral communication shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to be able to state their problem without debate. Those two words, John, are worth gold, "without debate." What that does is it frees anybody that's talking to you to say what they want without interruption. You listen to it, deliberate whatever you want later on. But it's worth gold, because sometimes you go to these meetings and public forums and things like that, and all you are is subject to interruption. So, I believe it was one of your colleagues that said, "Is that all we do right?" And I said, "It's enough." Anyway, going further from that, I think I want to tell you that I have, as I promised last session, gone down to the Rockwood School Committee, and I've been put on their agenda. So I'll be down there talking to them. But before I leave here, hopefully on decent terms, I want to give you some of the background to why I felt and said that I was a disenfranchised citizen or voter in Rockwood. And what I've done is I've gotten the transcript of the meetings that I thought were important to indicate that. I just want to put these in your public record. I've brought about 12 copies. You can actually take one or two of them home if you want to look at them. Have that in the public record so that you know where I'm coming from when I say that I believe that the future of democracy lies in some of these students' hands, and that in order to understand what we've gone through, they have to have adequate knowledge of, what did I say in the last meeting, embarrassing incidents. So I'll just give these to your recording secretary, and be on my way to the city council meeting.
Okay, well, thank you.
Oh, one last thing. I did go down to the Rockwood and Gloucester Slave Free Libraries and Googled this meeting, which I put on YouTube back in April last year, entitled "Rockwood Board of Excusemakers." And the thing with Google, when you go down to the library where there's no voice recognition and it comes out on sight, where you look at it, it might as well be translated in Chinese. So there's another good reason for your school committee to have the accurate transcription and the references to the actual... Thank you. Whatever it was.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the school committee on the oral communication? Seeing none, we will move on. Going from the chairperson, I would just like to remind people that tomorrow is the anniversary of the Parkland school shooting, and I think it's a good time for us to perhaps reflect on what has happened in the past year and whether we're making any progress into solutions to those issues. Recognizations.
I wanted to recognize these teachers and the leadership at O'Malley Innovation Middle School for a fabulous open house for the O'Malley Biolab. You guys can, if you haven't seen, maybe you didn't get to get there. It's quite impressive. There are 70 full units for the kids to go do all their learning and experimenting with this. And to put it in perspective, Maggie Rose has said she had heard of a high school who had three full units compared to O'Malley with 70. So it's really quite an example of how every kid gets to do hands-on and experiential learning, thanks to many different funders, the Education Foundation, Applied Materials, self-signaling, I think you got a grant from the England Biolabs, maybe? So it took a lot of effort and well, it was well fought out. Kids are excited, and the community is excited because I thought the open house was very well-attended.
And if I may, in concert with that, we've begun a public relations campaign through the Fringe Cayman, and Mr. Kukuru was at that open house. And we have a brief video highlighting said labs, so I'd like to show that if I may. There it is. Congratulations to O'Malley for terrific work, great opportunities for the kids.
Dr. Sapphire, I just realized that it has over 8,000 papers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's impressive.
What we're hoping for.
Are there any other recognitions? Then we'll move on to our Student Advisory Council of one.
Yes, just me today.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
Good. So this week, we started Secret Pals, so basically Teacher Appreciation Week, and we chose to do it on the week of Valentine's because, you know, Valentine's Day. So basically, everyone from Student Council and the National Honor Society gets a teacher or two to basically leave secret presents to them every single week, and at the end of the week, they reveal themselves, and it's, "I like it." I was one of the ones that actually brought it back, because last year we did an appreciation lunch, I believe, and I thought the teachers, they deserve more than just a lunch, because they do so much for the kids and for the schools, and so, I enjoy that. Course selection sheets went out, I believe, at the beginning of the week, and I think they're due tomorrow. You can help me on that, tomorrow. And also, we've had a lot of success with our school store. A big thank you to Dr. Sapphire and Mr. Boff for letting us have it for three days a week at the last 15 minutes of lunch. Sophomore event will be held at the Gloucester House on March 8th. Junior event is going to be held March 22nd at the Essex Room behind Woodman's. And the NHS National Honor Society induction is March 28th at 6:30 PM. Mark the calendars. That's all I have to mention.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you in a couple weeks.
All right.
Another presentation.
Thank you.
The consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda that anybody would like to remove? What was it?
I'd like to remove item number four, which is the Special School Committee and Executive Session of January 2nd, 2019.
Okay. Okay, because that's executive session, we'll have to discuss those reasons in executive session at our next opportunity.
Just the executive session.
Just that one, number four.
And then I would to approve the consent agenda.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we're going to move on to our deliberations on education issues, and we're going to start with a presentation from Fran Rosenberg from the North Shore Education Consortium. And welcome.
Thank you. You'll move. Okay, good. It was too complicated to bring my computer, so Dr. Sapphire offered to draw. Thank you, thank you for inviting me. It's a pleasure to be here. I was just thinking, six years ago, before I took the job as Executive Director at the consortium, when I knew about Gloucester, as you have really nice beaches, and six years later, I've had the privilege to work with many wonderful folks from Gloucester, as well as the students and families who we serve. So I think what you were looking for is just a brief overview of what we do at the consortium, particularly in regard to helping support the Gloucester Public Schools. So, quick history, the consortium has existed since 1975, and the mission has been, for that 40-some-odd years, to support our member districts by offering high-quality, cost-effective school programs, consultation, professional development, support services, and resources to really help districts provide successful learning experience to meet your mission for some of the students who have the most complex oral incidents, learning needs. Collaborative started in the 1970s in response to the increased expectation that public schools provide services for all students, including those with significant disabilities. And so that's really a little bit of how the consortium came to be. By districts pooling together, it enabled the consortium to provide services for a very unique population of kids in a more cost-effective way. We currently have 21 member districts and about $24 million budget. So, what does being one of those 21 members mean? It means that you pay a membership fee each year to the consortium, and what you get for that is, Dr. Sapphire is one of the board members, the superintendents of all of our member districts sit on the board, so I report to the superintendents. And that really ensures that the collaborative is responsive to the needs of the district, because I work for you and the 20 other districts. As a member of the collaborative, so you have the fiduciary say, you have a vote, Gloucester has a vote, and the way our collaborative is structured is regardless of the size of the city or town, each member district has one vote on the board. And Dr. Sapphire has been an active member, he's the chair of our Facilities and Capital Planning Committee, and so Gloucester is well-represented at the table when we look at our budget and programming needs. What you get with your membership primarily is reduced tuition when you have students who need to attend one of our other district programs and/or for our professional development offerings, and then there are other informal advantages around networking, consultation, and sort of learning about special ed in other neighboring districts, as well as sort of, some of our programs are small and highly specialized, they get full, and our priority is always for our member districts. And looking specifically at Gloucester's statistics from the last year, there were 32 Gloucester students who attended NEC programs, and I'm going to talk a little bit about what each of those programs is like, but just to give you the numbers, 13 students attended the Kevin O'Brady School in Beverly, 11 students attended North Shore Academy Upper School, three students attended North Shore Academy Lower School, four attended the Topsfield Vocational Academy, one student attended Recovery High School. In addition, six students who attend school in the Gloucester Public Schools received vision, orientation, and mobility services through the consortium, and six families received home-based services, primarily this is for students with autism, but these are students who attend public school but need some additional supports. Okay? In addition, now Patty Redman's not here tonight, but she has been actively involved in helping us help districts provide professional development, mostly for special education staff, and whenever we post an offer, she's always one of the first to sign up Gloucester employees to take advantage of that. So we've had four Gloucester educators attend our monthly job-alike groups for special ed administrators, that's a combination of collegial support and training. Four Gloucester employees attended a course that we offered for new and aspiring special education seniors, 14 attended our annual behavioral health conference, and you can see nine employees attended a workshop on improved outcomes for students looking for poverty, a couple of employees attended according to Gillingham Reading Course, and several employees attended a youth mental health first aid course. Again, because we're doing this on sort of a public group basis, and we're a not-for-profit, we're able to charge, we basically just cover our costs, so they're more cost-effective trainings than if you go to some private vendors for similar services. Tuition's expensive, because these are really hard, I'm sure you all know that, your 23 Gloucester students come to the consortium, so it's a big line item in your budget. But I want to just talk a little bit about what that looks like, because the numbers are a little staggering if you don't have any context. For the kids with the most severe disabilities, and I'll talk about who those kids are in a minute, the annual tuition is $72,000. What you'll see up there, that next to the $72,000 number, is for a non-member district, it would cost $87,000. And if we didn't exist, and you had to send the student to a place like Franciscan Children's Hospital, or Perkins School for the Blind, or a private setting, for students with severe disabilities, it could cost up to $96,000. So although the numbers are big, they're less big than they would be if we weren't able to provide these services. In our moderate disability programs, it's called moderate disabilities, but there are kids with severe mental health challenges, behavioral support challenges, emotional and behavioral needs, and again, you can see the comparative numbers. So really, one way to look at it is that's a lot of money. Another way to look at it is that Gloucester saved over $300,000 by being a member of the consortium, as opposed to if you weren't a member and you had to find other ways to educate those kids. So I'll talk next a little bit about each of those schools and the kinds of kids who attend them, and then I can open it up to any questions that you have. So the Kevin O'Brady School is our biggest, most expensive and oldest program. We consistently have served some of Gloucester's highest need students in this program. This is students with the most severe disabilities, ages 3 to 22. There are basically two subgroups of students in the school, students with complex physical and medical challenges, kids in wheelchairs who are non-verbal, they may have feeding tubes, they may be on vents or respirators, they need one-to-one nursing care, they need one-to-one speech and language, they're learning to use devices to communicate. They're kids with a very, very high level of need. Our goal for most students, and so the reason the program is so expensive is you have occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech and language pathology, vision support, special education supports, nursing, et cetera. So there's the medically fragile, multi-handicap kids, and then there are kids with autism combined with others. So kids who have mild autism are probably doing very well in inclusion settings, mild to moderate. Some of the kids who have the most severe forms of autism combined with other intellectual or physical disabilities and your very challenging or aggressive behaviors are the students who might come to our program. So again, these students may not need the nursing supports, but they really need one-to-one behavior analysis, behavioral supports, as well as the other related services. So we have, next, then our next few programs are our North Shore Academy programs. The Lower School, which serves first through sixth graders, is in Pevyty, and the Upper School, which is the next slide, is in Beverly and serves seventh through twelfth graders. And these are students with emotional, behavioral, mental health, behavioral health kinds of challenges, a wide range of different diagnoses. It's not quite as staff-intensive, but these are students who are really unable to thrive unless they're in very small classes with integrated clinical supports. Many of these students have significant trauma histories, many of these students are students who've been in and out of psychiatric hospitals and have really been unable to make progress in a less restrictive environment. So Upper and Lower Academy, you know, are each a little bit different, but that's basically the type of student. We can go on to the next one. And I guess I'll just, if you look at the bullets, I think one of the things I'm very proud of, and in looking at your little video on the Innovation School, I think in many places around the country, students with special needs lose out on that really high-quality enriched curriculum, or they lose out on extracurricular activities or enrichment opportunities, which are often the key to success. So one of the things we're really proud of in the programs that we're running for these students is that we're making sure that all of those things are happening. So they're not included by attending Gloucester Public Schools, but they're included because they're having opportunities to participate in community activities, to learn the skills for college or future success. I should mention, about half of the students in the elementary level stay with us for a short time and then return to public school to a less restrictive setting. At the high school level, once they come to us, they usually stay with us until graduation. About half of the students, a little more than half, the students at Upper Academy last year went on to two or four-year colleges, and the others went on to career and/or some of them went on to continuing vocational education. So we're really good with the support they need, many, many of these students are able to be really quite successful. Topsfield Vocational Academy serves a similar population of students, but these are students who do better in a more hands-on vocational environment all day rather than in an environment... North Shore Academy tries to look like a typical high school, students change classes for their academics, they go to math, they go to literature, and they go to electives. Topsfield Vocational Academy really works well for students who really need that vocational hands-on approach integrated, and many of these kids have had a lot of behavioral challenges, but at Topsfield Vocational Academy, they're participating in internships or jobs that are both hands-on learning, and they get paid, which becomes a great behavioral incentive, because you can't go over to the Essex Shipbuilding Yard and work on building boats if your behavior isn't stable and in control. And so it all becomes integrated into vocational training. There's a great culinary arts program, great woodshop program, and then a variety of other community-based vocational opportunities. Okay? Recovery High School is very unique, it's our only program that isn't technically a special education program, but we're all very well aware of the opiate problem and the concern about young people becoming addicted, and the goal is to do prevention and not need to have a recovery high school. But the students who come to our recovery high school are students who have struggled mightily with significant addiction issues. Many of them have really had serious trauma, have been in and out of treatment facilities, and they really need an environment that's 100% focused on supporting their recovery in addition to helping them get their high school diploma. So we've had a small handful of Gloucester students over the year, but it's an important program, and we're very glad that the North Shore community has been so supportive of us around the world. You don't have any Gloucester students attending the transition programs, which makes me think you must be running something really good for this population in districts, and you don't need us, which is great. But just to mention that we have two programs that are on the campus of Salem State University for 18- to 22-year-olds with either intellectual disabilities or autism spectrum disorders who qualify and need special education services past the age of 18 to really work on independence, living, employment, et cetera. And so those are, that's the little overview of our services. And then, as I mentioned before, we also do, on a much smaller scale, the majority of what we do is run those programs, we offer regional professional development, and we offer some consultation and in-district services as needed. So occasionally, Patty Redman, one of the Gloucester special ed chief chairs, will call us and say, "We need a highly specialized, augmented communication evaluation for one of our students, do you have somebody who could come out and do that for us?" Or, "We have a student who we're really hoping can stay at Gloucester High School, but we need some consultation on their mental health needs." So we'll do that sort of thing from time to time on a smaller scale. And let me open it up to your questions.
Questions?
I just have questions for the age groups. I saw on that last slide, without my glasses on, that it went up to age 22, but how about the other schools, what age groups?
So, it depends on the school. So Kevin O'Brady School, which has the most severely disabled students, goes up to 22, and then sort of embark up to 22. Most of the other students would end at high school graduation, and most of the other programs, students are eligible for their high school diplomas, they're passing MCAS. Yeah, with, they need those supports, but at Topsfield Vocational Academy and North Shore Academy, the students, close to 100%, are passing MCAs and earning a full diploma from their district and are ready to move on to college and career. The Kevin O'Brady School students and many of the embarked students, their disabilities are more significant, so they may be receiving this certificate of completion at the age of 22 instead, and our goal in those cases is to really prepare them for quality of life and the most independence they're capable of, which really varies from student to student. Some are able to go on to vocational settings and have jobs in the community. We do a lot of pre-vocational work, even with our more significantly involved kids.
That's impressive, and I just have one more question, this is more of a budget question. So capital projects, how are those funded? I mean, I understand the membership, you have a lot of schools.
Right. It's probably too hard to give a short answer. I can share with you, and Dr. Sapphire can share with you, the collaborative funding is complicated, and so basically every year, next month, the Board of Directors, which is the superintendents, will vote on that budget. We're able to retain a small amount of surplus in that budget, and the board had voted to, is able to vote to set aside money for capital projects. We own some of our buildings, we rent some of our buildings, but it's an interesting challenge, which is why it's nice to have some superintendents on that committee to help us plan. For many years, money was not set aside, and so we have, you know, failing air conditioning systems and aging roofs, and we're now, over the past five years, we've been in a place where we're able to start catching up and being more collaborative.
So is it fair to say, yeah, you caught me a little bit when you said you have 20 board members and they all have one vote. I sat on a 20-board member with those way votes, so I was trying to figure out how that works. So are you saying, because everyone has one vote, everyone equally shares in the capital projects, too, the cost of it, regardless of what the involvement is?
Well, yes, all, each district pays the same $10,000 annual membership fee, but then the rest varies. So if you look, and you can, this is on our website, or I can share it with you, you're one of our five biggest districts in terms of the number of students who come. So, you know, it's basically a small per piece of the tuition revenue that we're getting if we're doing our job well and we're able to keep our programs full, because our budget is based assuming a certain number of students and a certain amount of staffing. So collaboratives have to have the ability to be really flexible. You know, if we get more students, we can hire additional teachers. If we have fewer students, we need to move somebody around, because our goal is to try to be responsive as districts' needs change over the years. So if you guys opened up a great new program for students with autism, let's say, and you were able to figure out how to do that in a cost-effective way, district, you might send fewer kids to us, but you might all of a sudden have a need for more students with a different type of need. I have a long-winded answer.
That's okay. A couple questions. Do you get any state funding?
It's all indirectly through the districts, there's no direct state funding. We're considered a public school district, but we're sort of unique. There are 25 collaboratives around the state. There was new legislation about seven years ago, sort of clarifying the role of collaboratives in the public education system.
And my other question is, why would a community that probably needs to use, you know, have some kids come to some of your...
know, have some kids come to some of your schools for their needs not be a member?
Most of them are, and I think across the state, most districts are a member of their nearest collaborative. We actually had a couple of smaller districts on the North Shore that hadn't been members that have recently approached us about becoming members, because, right, if you do the math, once you're sending two or three students to us, it's well worth a $10,000 membership. But you also do, you know, our board members, we have to have a core, not all 20 superintendents come, but, you know, we need at least 10 at each board meeting. There is a fiduciary responsibility involved, you know, with participating, or it's not called bylaws, it's called a collaborative agreement. Basically states that if you're not participating, you could lose your membership status. That hasn't happened in my tenure, but there is some responsibility for oversight.
Some districts may actually belong to a different consortium as well, and use this as a potential one.
Correct, right.
Couple of questions. Can the superintendent share your powerpoint with us?
Yes, absolutely. And the other thing the superintendent can share with you, if he hasn't already, is we are required by statute to produce an annual report, which gets shared with school committees. Yeah, and so that has some of the financial data and some of the, you know, cost comparisons, that sort of thing.
Your total enrollment?
About 400 students at any given time.
And you... That's okay.
That's why I brought this along with me. Sometimes I said to Rich, "Seven o'clock at night, I can't remember numbers."
Now, you said the students actually get their diploma not from you, but from their home district.
Correct. So the district really still owns the student, and we're working for the district.
And all their MCAs, all the assessments stuff comes back.
Yeah, and the district has a responsibility. So your special ed folks have a responsibility to monitor our compliance and to make sure we're meeting the student's IP, to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing when a student comes to us.
Now, Recovery High used to get DPH money, correct?
Yes, and so Recovery High could be a whole, long discussion. The funding structure, it used to be a grant through DPH. It's now a grant. The grant shifted from DPH's line item to the Department of Education. So it's now funded partly through a block grant through the Department of Education and partly by a foundation budget based on...
So now you do get individual state funding?
Correct, yes. So yes, I was partly wrong when I answered that question before. Recovery High School is the one program where we are getting funding directly from the state.
Oh, that's right. And capital, I think I remember a couple of years ago, did this school, did you have to vote?
Yes, you had to vote the establishment.
The establishment of the surplus to be able to...
Yes.
And that isn't charged by... It's just the surplus of the budget.
Right, so the stat... There's a statute that says...
It has nothing to do with district's enrollments.
Correct, exactly. We're not allowed to retain more than 25% of surplus, right? So if we have a surplus between 1% cumulative surplus over history, if we have a surplus anywhere between 1% and 25%, the superintendents really get to say, "Put it aside for savings for capital on any day," or, "Wait a second, you should be giving that money back to the districts." Right, I think that's something that the board really controls. I think our board has been very thoughtful about saying, "As much as the districts would like to get a little bit of money back, we also need your programs to thrive, and if the roof falls down next year and we can't send those 23 students to the Kevin O'Grady School, we have a really serious problem." So I think it's an interesting check and balance, because my customer is also my boss. It kind of keeps everybody honest, because I'm working for the districts, and the districts are also sending students to our schools.
So is it my understanding that you cannot apply to NSBA for funding?
Correct. And the collaborative trade organization has tried to fight them every few years to no avail. I think in some regions where public schools have had declining enrollment, collaboratives are able to very inexpensively use space in public schools to run small programs. In this region, five years ago, we were using some Beverly Public School space, I guess longer ago in history, and we were using some space in other schools. None of our districts have excess space. Many of our districts are struggling to have space to meet the needs of their current students, and so that hasn't been an option for us, which does have a cost.
Any notes? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me. And my email's in here. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have it. Thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
And Dr. Safi, you'll send us the link.
I will.
Great.
Okay, moving on. We have the whole administrative team from O'Malley, Innovation Middle School, to inform us about the vaping diversion program.
Hello, committee. The unfortunate piece is I don't get to talk about anything really uplifting, with the exception of the plan. We know that our kids are now vaping more than they ever been. And as we go through the presentation, you realize that only two years ago at O'Malley, we didn't have a single case. And I think I spoke to the committee on this last year, a little bit in detail, but, you know, more to the point, you know, we can't just continue the same course that we've been working on with suspension, and it doesn't work. These devices are attractive to kids. They're designed for kids to discreetly hide, and they're actually very easy to get. So the vaping diversion program is something that Mr. Apple, so Graham Apple, who's one of the health teachers, who couldn't be here tonight, and I went to a local high school and talked with one of their administrators. This gentleman has really, from our research, led the charge as far as the diversion program. Very different community than ours, but it goes to show you that no matter where you are, Massachusetts, the United States, and the world, for all that matters, this is happening, you know, to our youth. There's no doubt about it. So he was pretty open with us and shared his information, and we then put the O'Malley spin on it. So this program is certainly applicable in high school levels, middle school levels, and I hope we never have to talk about it at the elementary level, but it certainly can be appropriate as well. Vaping is much like smoking a traditional cigarette, except that there's some technology behind it. It's not simply water vapor. There's chemicals in it, and there's definitely side effects. We don't know. Scientists don't know all the side effects at this point, and, you know, I don't know. I'm certainly not an expert in the field, but, you know, time will tell. But we do know that in the adolescent brain, there's no space, there's no room, you know, for this activity whatsoever. The other scary part about it is, you know, there's legitimate research-based information that says, you know, vaping in general is a safer alternative than, what, two traditional cigarettes. That might be, you know, appropriate to adults that have smoked for a number of years and are trying to quit, but again, it's certainly never appropriate to our adolescents and the adolescent brain. So I'm going to show to you, and I have a couple of actual devices, and I'm going to just explain to you in very basic terms what vape devices we are confiscating and obviously what vape devices our kids are using. So I have two examples, so if they're in baggies, don't be concerned. The first, which we see on the screen, we deal with most, and I think at the high school, you know, James could probably attest to, is these are, you know, tobacco or nicotine vapes. So this is a brand named The Juul, and as you can see with the measurement, is relatively small. It's discreet. We find kids, you know, they're on their person all the time, they're very easy to hide, on their body, in their clothes, you know, whatever the case might be. Quite simply, this is the pod. This is where the vape juice, where the nicotine and the flavoring is. This one in particular, it's an orange cap, it's mango flavored. The device itself, again, is very thin and slim and, you know, attractive to kids, and quite honestly, it looks like a USB drive. This portion, yeah, this portion of it is, you know, where the electronic part of it comes, where it converts the vape oil into the vapor, and this is where they, you know, put it in, where they inhale. It comes out as true vapor, opposed to smoke. It's significantly less... It has significantly less smell, so it's harder for us to detect on smell alone, and it disappears sooner, you know, or quicker than a traditional, you know, tobacco smoke might. There are close to 8,000 different flavors.
Wow.
Right, from traditional, you know, Virginia tobacco, to mango, to candy, to, you know, countless flavorings that appeal, obviously, to our kids. So as these are being passed around, these are the ones that you are actually seeing also on the screen. This is new to us. I think the high school, and James is shaking his head, they see it at the high school. This is a vape pen that has THC oil on it, so marijuana, which is, you know, not good. We don't want our kids, you know, under the influence of nicotine, and certainly, certainly don't want our kids under the, you know, influence of marijuana. So again, the basic components are the same. They look different. These devices are more expensive. This is the, you know, how they charge it, how it vaporizes, and then they inhale it. The cartridge itself, this was kind of, in one regard, a very satisfying, but on the other hand, it was a complete package for us. The labeling is quite simple. It's 85% THC and then .25 CBD oil. These things are hard-hitting, potent, you know, vapes that we know, we know now that it's been, you know, decriminalized and it's legal for people that are 21. Kids tell us all the time, "Well, you know, 21-year-olds are able to do it." Our kids cannot be doing stuff like this. And then this is the charger. It screws in, and you can charge it with your computer or any other USB device, your little iPhone, little white brick. And truly, they're hiding in plain sight in homes. I think parents are unaware as well. So again, this is just, these are traditional vape pods from a Juul or equivalent brands. Again, now you see that it's, you know, green. The ones that don't have it are cartridges, unfortunately, that have been used. The green one's brand new. It's probably mint or menthol or something that, again, is appealing to kids. Recently, we discovered this at O'Malley, and that too is new to us. That is, unlike a prepackaged, you know, get shipped to you or by a convenience store, the previous slide, you can now take that vape oil and put it into cartridges like that. That is sour-sweet strawberry gummy mouth-watering candy, and it is potent, okay? When we discovered it, just the smell that stays on your hands, it's difficult to go away. Those things are incredibly concentrated. That's .3% nicotine. We have the kids all day long, you know. The kids say to us, "Oh, there's no nicotine, it's just water vapor." It's all... Wrong. And unfortunately, we're starting to see kids become addicted to it. Again, at the high school level, I think it's probably more prevalent, not that it's any better or any worse. It's quite concerning. And then the last picture, we've, you know, from time to again, seen kids with Visine, and let's be honest, it's the wintertime, and they don't have allergies. We all know what that's for, okay? So not illegal in itself, but to be, in combination with everything else, it's part of the deal.
So what do they do with that?
They put it in their eyes so their eyes aren't...
So you can't tell that hard.
Yeah, it's a simple, I mean, it's an old trick, there's nothing new to it, but we have kids that are 12, 13, 14-year-old doing that. It's quite scary. All right, next slide. Thank you. Okay, so over a three-year span, and then this year's date is to date. As I said, two years ago, no cases at all. It wasn't even really on our radar. You know, we knew of it, and we knew it was happening. We saw our adults using it, you know, some ad and campaign things, and magazines and whatnot, and the internet, but it didn't seem, you know, at the time, that it was something that was going to come our way. And then, last year, 34 confirmed cases. So that means, you know, suspensions or suspendable offenses, kids were either in possession of or in use, or a combination of both. And at the time, you know, I'll go into a little bit more detail in a bit, at the time, we were given five days of suspension with minimal education. It was, it's a lot, it's, you know, likely too much suspension without education. We knew that. It didn't feel right. And then, you know, this year to date, we have 11, so statistically, it's lower than it was at this time last year, but for whatever reason, this week has been a particularly tough week. So this is a statistic over, you know, since 2011, and then it ends at 2005, a 900% increase in teens using e-cigarettes. Now, you know, in 2011, they weren't all, you know, they weren't all that common, so I mean, granted, that's a shocking statistic, but on the other hand, they're easier to get, they're more abundant, you know, all of that, so it's unfortunately not a surprise, but on the other hand, it's still incredibly shocking. So this graph is over a 30-day period, and it's from the New England Journal of Medicine. Again, this is high school, you know, mostly high school, but you can see that the eighth grade, 2017 to 2018, all the statistics are higher than they were a year ago. This, in this year, it was the highest one-year spike of any kind in the 44 years of monitoring the future, which is the survey organizations track substance abuse amongst young people. And one might ask, you know, is there anyone, any student body in particular or specific that is not participating? The answer's no. Boys are, girls are, and all three grades have been caught participating in this activity. It happens every day. We don't catch them every day, but it happens every day. And again, not to speak for the high school, but it happens every day down there as well. So in the past, so as, you know, as recent as last year, we were doing five-day out-of-school suspension, minimal education during the suspension process. We would talk during the intake meeting. We would talk during the reentry meeting. Parents, you know, actually were pretty supportive of the five-day. They understood that this was a pretty serious offense, and even if they weren't particularly happy that their child was being sent home for five days, they at least appreciated that we were taking it seriously. We knew that this was a big deal. We knew that this was a big problem, and as a result of it, we're handing out eight big consequences. So you might say we were being consistent, but again, you know, part of the educational process, we weren't, you know, we weren't providing kids, you know, with any other alternative or, you know, alternative to suspension. We continue to, it's been part of the curriculum for a long time, and it evolves as, you know, things, new things happen and come out, but there's a good curriculum within the health classes that all three grades and all kids will be exposed to over the course of this school year. So we, or I was invited to an alternative to suspension meeting around this time last year with Chris Cropp, one of the deans at the high school. And it was mostly high schools that were part of it, and Chris invited me. And it was North Shore administrators that were having similar problems, and it wasn't just vaping, but the issue specifically of suspensions. And, you know, the outcome would, you know, ultimately was, how do we reduce the number of suspensions and still educate our kids? And then, how do we get it so that they don't, you know, do it again, just the same offense again? So we, as an O'Malley administrative team and GHS as well, started to consider some of our options and think, you know, what's out there? What, you know, what does research tell us? And, you know, there's always going to be a place for suspension, we know that. But more now than I think ever before, particularly with, you know, substance abuse, especially at the younger grades, it's imperative that there's an education program. And that said, we've started to evolve and change and adapt our practices. So currently, we're now giving a one-day out-of-school suspension for the first offense. And then, as part of the suspension hearing, so when the families come in and the kid has the opportunity to defend themselves, we introduce the five-week, what we're considering mandatory education program, of which some of it's after school, some of it's during the school day. We haven't had a parent yet that says no to it, which again, tells us just at the surface, you know, without a true, a good dataset, because we haven't done it long enough, that parents also want something different. They understand the suspension. They're not arguing that, but they also realize that in order for us, as a community, you know, to combat this, with the education piece is imperative. So we've had parental support, and then, you know, the health class curriculum, again, has evolved, but it's a steady force that all of our kids are exposed to throughout the year. So the five-week, or the nuts and bolts of the diversion program of this, administration involvement happens throughout the entire process. We still, when we purpose... We still, when we purpose that we're considering it a very serious offense, our kids are doing something illegal. It's not that they're getting into a physical fight, for example, they're actually participating in something that, because of their age and the location, is actually illegal. There are laws against it. Again, we introduced the program during the suspension hearing, we gained parental support, which, again, has been fairly easy, and I expect as we continue this program, word gets out, more parents are going to be eager to see it and want it. I truly don't anticipate that we're going to have parents that are going to say, no, I don't think my child should be part of that, just suspend him or her and let him vape, you know, it's just not the case. The student starts the program as soon as they return, again, some of it's after school, and then by some of the nature of actually what we're doing, it has to happen during the school day. And it truly is a whole-school approach. We're involving, you know, mental health services, administrator support, our school resource officer, you know, there's a lot of contacts throughout the day that these kids are, you know, coming into contact with to help them with this. And again, throughout the weeks, throughout the program, I'm in contact with the families, you know, giving them progress updates and things like that. So again, our health teacher, Mr. Epple's an integral part of it, our school nurses, so these are all, so just keep in mind, this program's still in its development phases. It is not complete, but the thought and the idea behind all of it is. All parties that will be part, you know, kind of understand their role and have accepted it. So the health teachers, school nurses, guidance counselors, adjustment counselors, you know, student services in general, assistant principal, and principal at times as appropriate, and then again, the school resource officer, and his role really is to talk about the legal nature of it, or, you know, legality side of it. There are, and this is a good thing, there are wonderful, really well-filed resources online, whether it be videos, documents, and a lot of it is geared towards kids in an educational setting, so we really didn't have to reinvent the wheel. A lot of this stuff developed there, and in fact, which is often the case, there's actually too much stuff. But there are a lot of agencies, local and nationally, that are working on this, and we've been able to put a pretty, you know, content-rich program together that our kids are engaged, you know, they know they screwed up, they know they were in trouble, they know they had a consequence. And then the after-school session is just the opposite. It's an educational experience, and our kids don't feel as though it's a punishment. And currently, we have kids in it, none of them have graduated out of it just because of the newness of it, and they haven't worked their way through it, but certainly we expect and anticipate that kids will, in time. So, you know, the additional benefits, you know, we, again, we know that there's a time and a place for suspension, and likely there always will be, but we also realize that we're educating the entire student. So there's a huge component that's a social-emotional piece, you know, as simple as, why did you vape? Oftentimes, we'll tell, kids will tell a trusted adult, well, I was depressed, or I was pressured into it, or, you know, my parents do it, and I took it from them. So any of those things that we can get help us, you know, narrow down and make more specific the education. There's a restorative justice piece, you know, there's something that that child did that disrupted the learning of themselves, their classmates, you know, it depends on the setting, sometimes it's done in isolation, sometimes it's not. There's a piece to that. The community outreach piece, which is evolving, is essential. We have contacts with Leahy, and our contacts continue to evolve. You know, again, like I said earlier, there's so much content out there that people are eager to, you know, help, and they have a good knowledge base, and wants to do more for our kids, because this, you know, this is nearing epidemic for us, and I think at the high school level, it's even, I know at the high school it's even worse. Professionals in the field, you know, we will and have, or continue to reach out to people that are, you know, kind of, you know, on the ground, working on these things like this. And then, on the right-hand side, more specific to like our O'Malley stuff, we always try to tie anything back to our sales component. And kids, as they're doing their PSA, their public service announcement, are trying to develop, you know, more than just a regurgitation of something they found online, something that is important to them, that empowers them, and also makes it, you know, kind of specific to O'Malley. And again, we haven't done this, there probably should be an asterisk next to this one, but we haven't even contacted the elementary schools, but we want the kids that have graduated through the program to go down and talk to our elementary schools about the dangers and risks, and do not ever try this stuff. Not as a punitive thing, it's actually came from the kids. Some of our kids that are in the program said, you know, what else can we do? And they came up with the idea. So we haven't got there yet, but I think in time, it's probably time well spent. So here comes, you know, again, the nuts and bolts piece, right? Our student handbook, as currently stated and approved by school committee, it discusses, you know, we all know what it says, it discusses, you know, the inability and certainly can't, you know, have it on your possession, use them on school property and all of that. It currently is a level-three infraction, which our handbook is our highest level, which includes anywhere from suspension to expulsion. Proposed changes, and this is, I think, in line with teaching the whole kid, but also understanding that this is a big deal, this is serious, and we need to take it seriously. A combination of out-of-school suspension and mandatory diversion program for first offense, and then if a student fails to compete completely, excuse me, the program, he or she will be charged with possession of or use of drug paraphernalia. It's drug paraphernalia all day long. Kids can't have it in school, particularly THC, marijuana, it's a bad deal, there's just no way around it. And then additional suspension up to and including possible expulsion when they're not stood on the law, chapter seventy, section thirty-seven H, which we would use if we had to. So those changes certainly would need to be approved by all of you, we understand that. But we think that in order to have some teeth behind this program, we need to adapt and amend our current policy. And I think, you know, we've thought as an administrative team, we spoke with other, you know, administrators in other districts, and, you know, they're, you know, starting to wrap their heads around this as well, and we feel pretty firmly that this is, you know, a practice that, one, will give this program teeth, two, it'll show families and kids how, you know, adamant who we are and how bad, truly bad and dangerous this is. And, you know, I think it's something that should happen. Questions?
Questions?
Go ahead, because I got to finish that off.
The handbook change, you looking for an amendment this year or are you thinking next year?
You know, ideally, it'd be well, it'd be great.
Did you just answer?
I just said this year.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So put it forward super tight.
Yeah.
And base protectors.
Yep.
What do you know? Do they have any merit in investing?
So I know they exist, I know there are some schools, or I think there are some schools that use them. We haven't really done much research, Lynn, you might know from previous districts.
Yeah, I figured, there's at least one in the North Shore Principals Group that has tried some, but we discussed it quite a while back, I could go back to them to get more information.
I mean, my question is, is it primarily happening in the bathroom?
Yes, primarily, yep, no doubt about it. And it, you know, it's happening all over the place, but for us, primarily, we're catching kids in the bathroom.
Is that the same in high schools?
It is the same in high schools.
Yep.
How are you catching them?
A student staff and kids that are, you know, doing the right thing, yeah. And quite honestly, our kids are, you know, I mean, they know they're in trouble, we're not talking to them just because we want to say hi. Initially, they lie, and then, you know, they tend to just start pitching their body. They know they're in trouble.
To add a concern, Mr. Chairman, we have kids who have expressions, they're afraid to use the restroom during the school day, with fear of walking in with a student who's vaping and being caught, and I don't want to be a snitch, what do I do now?
Are they saying that they're getting it?
So interestingly enough, or maybe not, they're getting them all over the place. They're truly getting them on the street, and they're truly getting them through Amazon. And I was going to do this, but I don't have my laptop, but you could go on Juul.com and buy one right now. All you have to do is verify that you're twenty-one. We all look twenty-one, right? Middle school kids look twenty-one too on the internet, you know, it's that simple. They have to put in the password, you know, as long as everything checks out, that's it, that's it. And they're relatively cheap, you can get a starter pack Juul, you know, right around fifty bucks, and that's all those kids need, they're hooked, they're hooked. You got any thoughts?
I have a question. The proposed changes, is that from vaping or dabbing, or do you not see a difference?
We don't see a difference. So, well, the difference is that this doesn't cover nicotine, correct? Thirty-seven H?
That's correct.
Yeah. The thirty-seven H does not cover nicotine, but with THC, marijuana, you know, other hard drugs.
Jeff, I can also throw in, one of the things that's become more difficult is there actually sort of off-brand pods that have THC oil in them, and you can add THC oil to pods, and that's something, you know, you mentioned how they're new things all the time that we're keeping up with, and, you know, that's one of the new developments this year. And we found that the students are, they, at the high school as well, have been very helpful, you know, and they want help, the kids who are involved, and the kids who aren't involved really want to have their bathrooms back, and so our slowdown policies at the high school restricting some, you know, making sure students using the bathroom or...
Using the bathroom.
Or using the bathroom, and there aren't multiple people leaving classes and so on, and they're signing out and so on. It's really helped, and students have appreciated those efforts, providing information and, you know, all of these kinds of efforts Jeff's talking about.
Yeah, I mean, in the Amazon sense, you know, you know, families are buying their kids gift cards for Christmas, for the holidays, for birthdays, and they're going online and buying them. It's that simple too, you know, so we haven't done a parent presentation at O'Malley, but we're going to, we're going to show that.
Did your leadership in trucking all that finish? Because I didn't get to finish.
Sorry.
So I want to get back to this, because there's a point to be made here. So the proposed changes to the protocol, who came up with those changes?
We did collectively.
Has it been reviewed with the police department? Because this is how I see it, working in the court system, I have procedure in my head. So a child's dabbing, they're in possession of marijuana. It seems to me that the school is making the choice, because this is a violation, they're in possession, whether it be civil or criminal, under the age of twenty-one, there's more severe consequences. It seems to me that the school is making a decision not to report it and to deal with the possession at a school level, as opposed to according to the way the law would want it recognized. Because once it does get reported, there is a diversion program, and there's additional opportunities for a child to, or a student to redeem themselves. So I see this as you're given a chance without taking the responsibility to follow through with the regulations that are in place. So I'm wondering how that decision is made. I mean, I see you trying to help a student, I'd be the first one to give people chances, but I'm wondering how this, why this doesn't conflict? Like, did you have the school resource officer involved, or the class of police department involved with this conversation, because...
So I can answer that, or you want to chime in? Yeah, I kind of see it just as the opposite, I'll be honest with you. You know, that, you know, level of suspension is going to involve the police. And, you know, quite honestly, I think we're following protocol, you know, not navigating around or without police involvement, and I think that, you know, it's an appropriate next step, and I think that, yes, with us, there are internal diversion, but also, you know, once it's reached that level of suspension, there are other agencies that are certainly going to be involved.
And we're always notifying the police department that we had a drug case, and in the case that we had this week, a civil infraction will be issued to the family.
So it's your word that if a student is caught dabbing with marijuana or any product with THC, that it is reported to the authorities?
Yes.
Absolutely.
I just got the impression that maybe you were trying to handle it in-house, and I'm thinking that could be a problem at some point, you know, like I said, not that I don't want to help students at this level, because I do.
No, just to be clear, we're not trying to go around police at all, or not follow offices, just the opposite.
There's always a dual component, so we have our discipline, and the police do what they need to do, and we communicate with them, and every time we do something like this, theirs, we write up our report, they share theirs, we share ours, to make sure that, you know, if there's criminal charges, they're taking care of that.
Because, I mean, I agree with lessening the suspension, I believe it should be suspended in school anyway, I don't want to burst to send them home, they should be in school, but I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't an easy way out of this, and that the penalties were in place, but thank you.
You have questions?
So my question has to do with somebody as big as Amazon who is complicit in this growing problem. And so did anybody talk, I mean, is anybody talking at the Department of Public Health about, you know, public outcry to these providers such as Amazon, who, you know, cares about their reputation? And I realize the FDA is way behind on all this, which there needs to be pressure on, you know, that or, you know, that administration, but it just seems that...
Could I suggest a letter from the school committee addressed to Congressman Holden to encourage some action at the federal level? That's where it really has to start. We are definitely behind the curve.
I just have a quick question. The five-week education program, and you said some of it's after school, some of it's during the school, roughly how many hours a day, is it every day, is it, how's that work?
Yeah, so it's, the after-school component is Mondays and Wednesdays, it's just over an hour each day. And then the in-school sessions, they vary, they could be a half hour, they could be, you know, considerably longer depending on, you know, what comes of it. And truly, some of it happens during the school day because of the nature of the people that they're meeting with, that's just the hours they work. But we're also trying to be sensitive to the fact that we want kids to know, you know, so if it's multiple fifteen-minute sessions, we're good with that, if it's one larger session, and they feel that the staff member that's in charge of that feels satisfied, you know, that's fine too, there's flexibility built in during the school day.
Can I ask one more quick question? I wanted to ask you earlier too, I remember when I was at school, we had smoking Sam, where this dummy came into the room and they smoked a cigarette, and you could actually see the stuff go into the lungs, and to me, being a visual person, that's always stuck in my head. And I was wondering, are there any lessons or demonstrations like that for this type of thing? Yeah, I mean, I know it's kind of soon and early, but I find it hard to believe that kids really knew what they were putting in their body and saw it from a different perspective that they would continue to do this?
Well, we all know, kids, you know, live in the moment, with all due respect, and they don't think that there's long-term implications. We, part of the after-school program, the upfront stuff is the heavy-hitting, you know, here's what's going to happen with long-term use of this, anything from popcorn lung to, you know, other cancers that traditional tobacco cigarettes give. We are thinking, you know, people in the field are thinking that that's inevitable, but the data is just, there's not enough of it to support it, you know, so, yeah.
I do, I'd like to take your words. Have you contacted the DA's office?
No.
Let me tell you something, I've been in a couple of conferences and some summits, and they're doing similar things all around, it's not just us, and having the same problems, and they have money to do things too. And don't forget, we started the Angel Program for Diversity, they're doing other stuff too. I really, we have them here, I would really contact them, have them come in, have their workers come in, and they will start programs with you, and actually fund them.
Yep, well, that's what we need.
And I remember when he came in one time and actually told the parents when, because before we had to worry this, we worried about drinking, and how we had the buddy program, and how you, he did this visual of what happens to the parents when a child drinks in your home and what can happen to you. And that really scared a lot of parents too, so I would, you know, I would contact them. Contact my office, we'll get you the numbers, we'll get you, because we have a close relationship, and this is like one of his things. He just, it was just right, he just went to a conference to stop what it is, and he's working closely with the Middleton Jail, with the sheriff's office too, so.
The more resources, the funding, and the funding, you know, the sustainability will come.
And I think protocols of how you want us to suspend in-house, I mean, we used to do that, we as a school committee can make a policy, but also, we did that just at the spur of the moment. If you remember, a while ago, there was the... If you remember, a while ago, there was the breakfast, the champagne breakfast, and all the kids got caught a couple of years, I'm talking about a couple of years ago. Okay. All right, my daughter's class. So, instead of, I went in there like a raging bull. I says, "You're gonna suspend these kids." First of all, they haven't, it's the end of the summer. Who the hell's gonna, what teacher's gonna stay? They haven't done their testing and all that. And you're giving five days school on the beach. What kind of a punishment is that? I says, "Why don't you make them clean the damn schools? We need people to clean the schools after summer. Why don't you have them clean the police department? They'll never return." And that's what we did. Joe Sullivan said, "Absolutely, we're not suspending them." And every single person who got caught, the junior class, all had to do, they had to do one week of community service in the school systems. And if you didn't, come September, you weren't allowed in the school. We did it. We didn't ask the school committee. Maybe it was just Joe Sullivan, "Come on, go get it." But it worked, it worked. It worked. You know what? Watch.
Thank you very much. And don't go far. You're up next. Thank you very much. Once again, can we get that? Community collaborative initiative.
Just, I want to put on the record that Art Sweller, Omeili administrators, here by this side. All right, so, I don't, oh, we do, what is this?
No, it's just backdrop.
Community Collaborative Initiative is an organization through Essex County, through the DA's office, that the middle school, the high school meet. They meet, they physically meet at the middle school, bi-monthly meetings. And a representative from the DA's office come. Ideally, DCF is there. GHS admin, Omeili admin. Probation? Right, probation's there. So essentially, what this is, is to talk about the kids that are in the court system, where their cases are, if they're in diversion, you know, the progress that they're making. So it's all of that. We come with an agenda, we come with our specific kids. The high school talks about their specific kids. The DA will share information that otherwise we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't easily apprehend or know. And then, from time to time, the DA's office will provide professional development. Last year, for example, at the high school, they provided, which was really wonderful and unfortunate professional development on human trafficking with kids our age. So, attended by school nurses, social workers, student service people in general, school administrators, you know, what to look for, how to handle it, how to make sure that, you know, state agencies and the police, whoever has to know about it knows about it in a timely manner. And how to do what your role, what our role as administrators is, what part of the investigation is our role, and then when to turn it over. So, they're at least an hour long. You know, we find them informative, we find them timely. And we have another one coming up, March 15th. Questions on that? Any questions?
I just had a couple of questions. So, I was the one that brought this forward for requests, just to hear about it, because I found out about it, like I said, working in the court system, I hear a lot of bits and pieces, just trying to figure out how it all pulls together. So, it's my understanding, and I could be wrong, because I've never attended these meetings, is this just for kids that are court-involved? Or is it for kids that pose high-risk behaviors that could be a danger, potential danger to schools or the community as a whole? So in other words, you don't necessarily have to have court involvement? And I'm asking this as a question.
Sure. Yeah, that's a good question. The majority of the meetings are kids that are currently court-involved. But I think from time to time, we, you know, like red flag kids, and we say, you know, this kid's associated with this kid who's, you know, involved in the court system. And we know this about him or her. And I just think that it's appropriate timely information sharing so that, you know, we're aware that kids are involving in, you know, activity that they shouldn't be. We don't really have anything on them yet, but, you know, it's information that's helpful for the DA if it ever gets to that level.
And DCF-related cases?
Right, exactly.
So, why is the elementary school level not represented?
They might be at their own level, they just, they don't participate with us. I don't know the answer to that.
Sounds like they have. That's why I asked, because I think they are in the community. So that was one of the reasons why I asked to hear more about this, is to find out why the elementary level isn't representative, unless all the kids are great and don't pose any risk.
Well, they are. Yeah. They're all, I don't, unfortunately, I don't have the answer to that. I don't know.
And then my last question is, what is the channel of information from your departments to the superintendent's office or to the higher chain command? In other words, superintendent's office should have some sort of knowledge of what's going on in these meetings, whether through attendance or through a report. And I just wanted to know how that works. So, in other words, if an incident happens, the central office should have an idea of, okay, that child was at risk, and this isn't surprising to us, you know what I mean? And there is information being shared about that.
Yeah. I mean, I think in general terms, that that type of information is being shared, you know, at the principal to superintendent level, as it's happening. Often, at these CCI meetings, there are updates that are within the court system that help us navigate students' potential return to school. Say it again?
Whatever's next.
Yeah, the next steps. And I think that, you know, those conversations happen at that meeting, and then are shared, you know, hopefully, you know, up to the superintendent's level, so that, you know, Dr. Sapphire informs. And then we're making, you know, at times, district-level decisions about our students that are at high risk for, you know, are already at high risk because of the offenses or things that they've already committed.
Yeah, because it just seems to be getting more common. I mean, we, school committee gets emails when we have a lockdown or shelter in place, or whatever we call it. And they happen, they're happening more frequently now. And I work in an office that when this notice goes out, four phones in my office goes out, because there's kids, the parents are getting their notice. And right away, they go to worst-case scenario. What's going on at the school is, you know, it's more, they're thinking more of like, in the day and the age of school shootings, you know, how severe is it they're actually doing a shelter-in-place? You know, that's a parent's train of thought, worst-case scenario, even though it could just be a child out of, acting out of order, and they need to calm down. So that's why I wanted to hear how this works in our school. And I would like to hear from Dr. Sapphire. Are you getting notified about the discussions in these? I know they only happen like four times a year. But is there some, if you're not attending, and maybe you are, is there some sort of report that goes from the meeting to you or someone you delegate, so that central office has an idea of the discussions that are going on in these types of meetings?
Our conversations are more on a case-by-case basis. I don't get a subvention or executive summary of the meetings that take place. But when there are hot-button items involving children, then I'm in close contact with the principals as to what the strategies, what the concerns are, how we're going to address them. We live in an age now where we are being asked systemically to respond to situations when, for lack of a better term, students break down. And it can be alarming for parents to receive notice that there is a shelter-in-place. But we're doing it because we need to handle a child with the greatest of care. And we need to make sure that that child doesn't escalate to a point where they have amulet. So, combined with the gestalt of the time, sorry for the word, but because of the expectations of ensuring that there are systemic responses to potential crisis situations. By crisis situation, I'm talking about individual students. Then principals feel that they need to take those kinds of actions. We don't want it to happen in abundance. There were two over the last couple of weeks of what you're relating to. But maybe there are ways that we can communicate with parents to let them know that, like it or not, these are standard operating procedures in order to ensure and maximize safety for them.
Right. And know that I wasn't saying that parents were complaining about it. It's just automatically apparent.
It's alarming.
Worst-case scenario.
It's alarming to send it out.
And a lot of times, we'll use that shelter-in-place for the privacy of the student. They're gonna be going off in the ambulance. We don't want the entire student body to see that. So we'll go shelter-in-place for as brief a period of time as we can, for the benefit of that student.
Because shelter-in-place is really a stay out of the way. It's not, there's not typically an inherent danger for anyone else. We just need the halls clear.
Right.
Someone breaks their leg, we would go shelter-in-place. The ambulance has to get in and out.
And learning continues.
Yeah. That's, they're not hiding, they're not shutting lights off or anything else.
I will also give a different perspective. I had at least a couple of middle school parents tell me this week that they were very pleased with the communication from the middle school when there are situations. So, I had people that looked at it as a constructive communication about a situation exactly like you're describing. They didn't think that it was something different or more.
Well, I got different emails. I got thousands of emails, Facebook, everything you can think of under the sun, texts, who knows, we're in the Omeili school. I wish information would go out when you talk about just what you just said. Doesn't mean when we say, you know, stay in place means that it's hazardous. That means it could be, a person needs to be taken out by IM. Because I think because of what's been happening all around, they think, "Oh, my God, something's happened, they've taken that person out. Did someone threaten the school? Did someone, you know what?" A lot of you, I said, "No, that's just a standard procedure." But the person who they have to take out, the same thing as, you know, you want privacy. A person, you know, and they says, "Well, we didn't know that." A lot of them don't know that.
Yeah, they didn't read the whole email.
Huh?
They don't read the whole email.
Yes, they do, because... Even if they didn't read it, when you're a parent and you read, all of a sudden, you get something from the superintendent, you panic, you don't read the whole thing. We're calm, we're in our office, we read it, and we go. Then you see Facebook. "Oh, did you hear what happened at the school?" Because every child already texted their mother, emailed their mother, Facebooked their mother, whatever they did, this, this, and this. And parents don't know what that is. The kids just tell them, "Oh, my God, this kid." Because, ask Dr. Sapphire. I got a response, he got a response, he had to go call the parents and say, "That's not what happened. Your child said it to you wrong. You know the scenario will happen one morning."
I do.
Yes.
But I also know that these houses that go out and saying that, they would...
Right, exactly. But the parents still freak out.
Following procedures, there were no threats.
Yeah, but the parents, when the kid says, "I feel unsafe, Mom, come get me." What do you do? What do you do? That's what the kid said. "I feel unsafe, come back and get me." Right away, they took action and handled it. Great, and the kid felt safe. They grabbed the child, of course. But it's better if simple things, simple communication. This is this protocol, this is that protocol. Don't be alarmed if you're here, stay in place. Actually, it's better.
And a lot of the times, the kids are texting to their parents before the notice goes out.
Yeah.
Which was this case.
Yeah.
So...
We had to do it over the years, you know, to get the information out as quickly as possible.
No, 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 yeah.
But even with that, even with that, does the kids run from it?
They're gonna freak out.
It's almost like you have to start the...
Can I ask a question?
Do not do it. And then say the email, just to set the tone of what's to come.
Yes, Mr. Gross.
Thank you. And it just, it came to mind, now, when you're talking about court involvement, could that also be where the, it has nothing to do with the child, but it's the parents that then... Gestures out.
How to inform those situations? Yeah.
This is...
Also be, so that's where probably more elementary...
Public school, or DCF. It's a large...
Is what happened.
These are truly student-centered, student-court-involved kids.
Right, for the kids themselves. I was just wondering, if it's also a situation where the child's been removed from the home through the courts?
We were learning, hopefully, a lot from that. There's different...
But I was just wondering if they're involved in these discussions?
So, tell me the, so I can jump in a little bit. The purpose of these meetings every other month, really to get a whole bunch of people together to talk about those students who are court-involved and so on? Oftentimes, there are several things that have happened since the last time. Whereas the thing you're asking about that happens more quickly?
Is it, well, just more specific of how, is there isolated situations where this is, this mechanism is triggered just simply because the child is removed? But no action from the child? And what I'm hearing is no.
Not in CCI.
Okay. Also, I mean, if I can make a recommendation, is come up with a new term, rather than shelter-in-place for these, like, stay at home, or stay in your room, you know, shelter-in-place strikes you. If you come up with a new term, it would diffuse an awful lot of that.
That would be difficult. Honestly, that's a nationwide agreed-upon emergency response term on levels of lockdown and shelter-in-place.
But it's not really a lockdown, you're just keeping the children...
No, but there is a... There is a difference between a lockdown and a shelter-in-place. But I think education is needed, and I already have it in mind. It's clear that people aren't clear on the difference between shelter-in-place and lockdown.
Do you have to report when you do a shelter-in-place? Because I'm wondering why you would have to call it a shelter-in-place? I get the terminology. But if it's not, if it's just for the privacy of a student, which I understand, are you required by our emergency policy to call it a shelter-in-place? Or can you just send an email saying, "Kids were told to stay in their room due to an issue with a student that required privacy"? In other words, do you have to use that term legally, or according to the policy? Or is there another way of communication coming out which informs the parents that their child was not able to leave the room? However, it didn't involve an emergency to them, it was more to settle a child and deal with the privacy of the child that needed the assistance?
I'm not sure requirement is a word I would use. I would, I would, more classified is a, it's a, it's a system, systemic agreed-upon...
Staff is trained to respond to a shelter-in-place. They're trained to respond to a lockdown. They're trained to respond to an Alice-type event.
Right. But you can't deviate away from that to add something else?
I think there would need to be agreement, because those protocols are agreed upon across the district and across the region and the state. And it's, once you start changing language, then you run into a situation where people are less clear, not more clear about what's happening.
So, I hear what you're saying. It could be a situation where officially, the school announces to itself that there's a shelter-in-place. And the suggestion is that we soften the notice that goes home and say that we ask the kids to, the students, everybody to stay within their rooms. You're still going to have students who are going to text out and say, "We have a shelter-in-place." In other words, we do need the language.
No, I know, I'm trying to find the meaning.
But we still need to know what to do. So, I don't think we can deviate from that. And we can try to counter the language that we send out. But we still may get the action, parent involved.
Well, you know what? Have them do something, like she said, explain the definitions.
Yeah.
Explain the definitions, and parents, please. Sometimes you might hear, "Stay in place," read the emails completely. Children might hear, "Stay in place," they're not going to understand. "We'll send it to you as adults, but as a privacy..." Throw some examples. And maybe they'll understand, instead of the, you know... And maybe they'll understand instead of the, you know, because with cell phones that are not supposed to be in school, are in school. And they do text their parents and right away, before you even, before we even get anything, we're getting the phone calls, so.
Put in the subject line, do not panic. And then just chill, chill, breathe something, just to, just to set the tone of the emails.
Oh, we had another.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Distina.
Thank you, thank you very much. So in our last meeting, the superintendent informed us that the, that it was being some changes in the Northeast Conference and the Greater Boston League. Nobody really could quite figure out what they were, so we brought in our expert and athletic director, Mr. Lefada, to explain it all to us, even we can understand.
The so-called expert, I'm still learning ropes here with some of this stuff. But as far as the GBL, Greater Boston League and the Northeastern Conference, if you were part of Northeastern Conference, any city, there was a five-year pilot program, the four schools from the GBL were put into the Northeastern Conference to see how it would work and see if we would accept them full-time. Those schools were Everett, Somerville, Malden, Medford. Just recently, this is actually, we're about to wrap up year three of this pilot program. And there was a vote, the vote always goes up, it was through the principals. And they were voted, they were required a two-thirds vote to be kept into the Northeastern Conference after this five-year pilot program. And they did not receive that. So at that point, after the two years, they're supposed to still finish this next couple of years out in the league. They will then move on and will go back to basically our 12-team conference, other than the 16. The GBL schools, just prior to the vote, stated that if they were voted out, would put a bid with the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association, the MIAA, that they would want to be removed right after the spring, not hang around for two more years. And so it looks like that will probably be granted. So at this point now, we're just in the process of realigning the conference with what we will have for this upcoming fall. We already had schedules done for all of the sports. We kind of had the next couple of years in plan or in place, but now we're just redoing that. So basically what happened was those four schools, it was all different votes. Every school had different reasons, whether it was logistics of travel to those schools that are closer to Boston, competition levels, what they offered for competition. Some schools just wanted the, the old Northeastern Conference back. So there were all various reasons for yes votes or no votes, but at that time, they just were voted out. And so they will be moving on to their own conference or try to get to another conference.
Talk about conferences, we were at the MIAA meeting when the vote went down. Thank you very much, because I shined, too Beverly sucks, they said.
Good job, Ryan.
Thanks. Thank you all, Mr. Cook. Thank you, thank you. I was like, oh, my God, what are you talking about? I'm texting, they're going, yeah, so thank you very much.
That's where we're at. We're still in the Northeastern Conference. So any rumors or anything, we're not going anywhere, we're staying where we're at. We just might have different aligned divisions, but it's the same schools we primarily play.
So what was the rationale of the pilot timeframe, just to, just to add more competition to?
Yeah, they were, their league had somewhat divided apart over the years. And I was here at the time to make that decision, so I'm not really sure I was the baseball coach. And I was just kind of told these four schools are going to be on your schedule for the next five years. And it was kind of, actually, I didn't even realize at first it was a pilot program. But just to try and strengthen the conference, they added more to our conference. At the time, people thought added more, but after a couple of years, they thought maybe didn't have enough to the conference, so. Not really sure the exact reasons, I'm sure there are quite a few, why they added them. To add up to 16 teams makes it almost, you could consider it maybe a power conference in the state. There's not many conferences in the entire state that have that many teams, so.
Any other questions?
Is there a, sorry, as you said, it is a little murky. Is there a date that anything's going to change, any, is there any, any changes that we have to make in titles or anything on that stuff or?
Nope, because we're still in Northeastern Conference, everything stays the same.
So we're just saying.
Yeah, I mean, just see listed four less schools basically in the conference. But as far as if you were a part of, it's the same conference, we've always been involved. And so my athletic director meetings will be with 12 of the original schools. James and his principal meetings will be with 12 pretty much existing Northeastern Conference schools. The one, the big factor for us now is just realigning all the schedules. You lose four to, three to four teams, sometimes that might be up to eight teams in a season against those schools, depending on the sport and how many games or matches you have. So now that's the big project, is just to realign. And if we have to find more outside of conference, which, I mean, in my short time, the four ADs that worked at those four institutions, I had a great relationship with, they were good to work with. That hopefully, if we need any non-league competition, we can reach out to them and play them either at their place or ours if need be.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You clarified that for us. We'll move on to the superintendent's goals.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, a professional practice goal is similar to what it was last year. I gain a lot of insight as to what's taking place within the district when I schedule at least three meetings per month across the schools. This includes, like, the staff meetings, site-based council meetings, BTO data meetings, regular meetings, administrative meetings. It's an opportunity to find out what their agendas are, their goals, their interactions, the dynamics, you know, some of what's taking place. Big difference between walking in the hallways, going to classes for a minute and walking out, very nice, glad to see people, do appreciate it. But I don't get to really hear something in the workings as to what's taking place in the buildings. As before, I would maintain a log describing the activities that take place during those particular meetings. And then based upon need, if there is basis and reason for me to meet and discuss with the principal, anything that comes out of those particular meetings, then I'm prepared and happy to do so. Yes, ma'am.
You said I will attend up to three, and you're saying you'll do at least three. Can you say I will do at least three?
I will attend up to three meetings. If you'd like to change it to at least.
At least three, yeah. Thanks.
I think you have 2,019.
Yeah, I borrowed this from last year and didn't get her the response, so we can go to the evaluation tonight if you like. The Student Learning SMART Goal, this is divided between grades three through eight and grade 10. And it deals with the student growth percentile, which is a comparative measurement between how students did one year and how they did the next year. We spoke in the past about how the Department of Ed has maintained what they refer to as a normal distribution in terms of the median percentile and how it's calculated. And between 40 and 60 percentile range is that normal distribution. For that, last year, the Student Growth SMART Goal was that all of our schools would have the SGP within the 40 to 60 range. For grades three through eight, we'd like to raise that now to 45 to 60 and have them achieve that. At grade 10, the student growth percentiles in both ELA and math were just slightly under the normal distribution. One was 39.6, the other was just about the same. And so we'd like to shoot for at least a student growth percentile of 42 at the grade 10 level. Some of the action steps include curriculum review and revision. This is an ongoing process. Teachers are continually thinking about what might or might not need to change, making modifications. There are curriculum review team meetings that take place toward the end of the year, where they're looking at the curriculum scope, sequence, how much, how often are things being reinforced, what changes need to be done. This is an ongoing process. In special education, we'd really like to target our special education teachers for content knowledge in particular, plus pedagogy, particularly in mathematics. There are a host of things that we do with respect to MCAS preparation, which also work towards this particular goal. We have spoken about strengthening the higher order of thinking skills, high leverage reading and writing strategies. We began at the elementary level years ago with ESRI, now currently Momenta, and have moved into the middle school as well, as we're looking at literary strategies there. The Math and Books Program, which is in about its fourth year or so now, is an interesting program, perhaps unique in that it's not strictly interested in teaching students a particular formula or a particular algorithm, but rather through exploration, through inquiry, having them identify different ways to solve the same kind of problem. So there's a certain flexibility of mind and is presumably a greater level of understanding and conceptualization with the mathematics. So it's not just computing, but also conceptualizing as well. The middle school is in its third year, I believe, of its new math program, which also emphasizes higher order thinking. I mentioned that they are looking to implement literacy strategies across the curriculum to help students think, speak, and write critically about specific content at both the elementary and at the middle school level, and it stands to reason for the high school level, but they are. The elementary will be adopting, there's a committee working to adopt a program for next year. It may be a split between K2 and 3 and 5, but they want to ensure that there is ample inquiry, investigation, and experimentation. The high school continues to review its curriculum within the, what's called the Understanding by Design format, where there are six major ways in which students can demonstrate their understanding, from describing something, analyzing, interpreting, putting themselves in the shoes of others and showing empathy, understanding multiple perspectives, and also a certain amount of self-reflection as they are able to as well. So there's a considerable amount of work that's being done at the high school. I think I already said this, but consistent with NEASC, they've just completed their self-evaluation and are in the process now of implementing the results of that self-evaluation, having met with NEASC officials. October? October, in October. And they're coming to visit you in? Fall of 2020. In which case, the school will then report out on many of these things as well. The middle school is looking to see how they can implement supplemental reading instruction for grades six through eight students. And across the board, data meetings play an absolutely fundamental part in our capacity to see how we can address the challenges that students have, but also to think in terms of various conceptual understandings and how we might orient our teaching to facilitate that learning. District SMART Goal, number one, bringing this to the high school. And as you know, we are obligated to develop a turnaround plan. This plan will be developed by the end of the school year, should be completed by June, although we may be allowed a little bit more time for reasons that I'll shortly explain. We have applied for and received turnaround grant, it's for $25,000. Most of that is going to be used for stipends for teachers for after-school. We're also looking to bring in a facilitator and an objective set of eyes to work with the high school in terms of the development of the implementation plan as well. As part of the turnaround process, we are required to have a turnaround site visit by a certified agency through the Department of Ed. And the soonest that they can come to the high school is sometime in April. As a result, the fact that they're coming in April, that we're doing surveys, focus groups and the like, we may need more time to fully develop the plan, and the Department of Ed is well aware of that.
What are the goals of the plan? I mean, you don't have to have specifics, but like. I thought you were moving on to something else.
No, no, because what, what you're about to hear is based on the template that has to be developed. And there are a number of components and there are a certain number of practices. In terms of the components, we have to document each of these and illustrate how we are engaging in all of our stakeholders, parents, the site-based council, staff, students, so that we can document the input that's taking place in the development of the turnaround plan. We're being asked to develop a vision for the future, a three- to five-year vision, which would be the result of the turnaround process. We need to analyze our assets and how we can build upon them, and we also need to identify what our challenges are and then begin to talk about how they're going to be addressed through best practices with respect to the turnaround process. There is a document that the Department of Ed has provided, about a 60-page document on lessons learned with respect to turnaround. And we're in the process of reviewing that right now as we begin thinking about the development of the plan itself. There are also many, many things that are being done with respect to the aforementioned, not the aforementioned, but the Coordinator Program Review and also the NEASC work. So in many respects, the turnaround plan is going to slide right into a lot of the work that the high school is already in the process of doing. Ensuring the implementation, of course, is paramount. And then the fourth major component is to specifically identify the objectives. And within those objectives, the initiatives that are the key strategies that the school is going to implement, what the rationale is for those strategies, and a plan for supporting their implementation. In addition, there are several turnaround practices that have to be demonstrated as well. First is leadership, shared responsibility, and professional collaboration, the extent to which the school highlights and illustrates its community of practice through the leadership, through shared responsibility for all students and including students, and ensuring that we can demonstrate that there is professional collaboration, such as the work that takes place in the professional learning communities at the high school. Second, as it suggested with strategic objectives and their initiatives, there have to be intentional, what they refer to as intentional practices for approving instruction, so that they are teacher-specific, meaning that teachers understand the need to employ these particular strategies, and more importantly, that they are responsive to the needs of students and that students themselves will respond to these particular instructional practices. In conjunction with that, we need to document the ways in which we will provide student-specific supports and instruction for all students. Response to intervention at the high school level or even the middle school level is more complicated and more difficult than it is at the elementary simply by virtue of the schedule. But we do need to find ways, if students are not getting it, we need to find ways to give them double doses of the English and the math and the science, what have you. And that's something that we will be studying as well. The next, the last bullet is school culture and climate. And we have to document and demonstrate the extent to which it's safe, it's orderly, it's respectful for our students, and also the extent to which there is collegial and collaborative culture amongst our teachers as well. And then the last bullet is, has to do with district systems. Will there be fundamental aspects to the turnaround plan which require the district to make some sort of changes, adjustments, modifications, autonomies or what have you? And we also have to provide a three-year financial plan for how we're going to support the resources that are needed for the turnaround plan as well. So it's fairly comprehensive.
Didn't a few years ago down the high school, we have a, a person who was the MCAS coordinator, and didn't we also have programs like kids who were doing well in math or MCAS math, didn't they? Wasn't there some programs down there after school or during school that helped those kids? So what ended up happening with those programs?
There was a grant that I worked for with Sherwin and Parker. I took over with Peggy Reardon, and the money ran out because we did not have enough students participating. It was summer and after-school. We even, I even engaged, Principal Lucy, I think, just started working at O'Malley. We engaged the eighth graders because it was really just the high school. We had some successes, but, I mean, they paid for food. It was, it was a pretty hefty grant, but then it kind of petered out. And they, we didn't have the numbers, we didn't have the, of the kids coming in. I mean, I'd be happy to look into it again if free time.
James, was there something you want to? Sure, yeah, so we've, we've found that the kind of embedded interventions are more effective where we have the students during the school day. So differentiating some and addressing some gaps a student might have in, say, their math knowledge or, you know, say their writing ability, when we have them during the school hours has been the most effective way. So embedded in the regular classes or, say, in an academic support class for, you know, 27% of our students who are, who have special education students, you know, who might have an academic support, by embedding those things during the school day has been the most effective way of seeing growth in the students. And, you know, one of the things that, as Dr. Sapphire said, some of the things that will come about in the turnaround plan are already part of what we're planning for our NEASC growth plans, such as expanding literacy efforts. You heard a little bit about literacy efforts at the middle school. We're working with Keys to Literacy to help both social studies and English teachers help teach kids at the high school level how to read at grade level. And that's one of the things that when you have 50% of high-needs students, as we do in our building, so 50% of our students are either English language learners, special education students, or socioeconomically disadvantaged, one of every two kids, right? That they have gaps in their education often. And so at a high school, often what had been done in the past would be you expect the kids already to be able to do the read, you know, read and write, and you apply that reading and writing to the content. Well, we're finding that we have to address some of these gaps that exist. And doing it with this professional development and empowering teachers to be able to do that is, we found the most effective way. And math is similar.
Thank you.
The last bullet that says a three-year financial plan for the school. How are we going to put forth a plan? We know we can secure a financial plan.
I obviously don't have the question at this point in time. The per pupil spending in the district is highest at the high school, so perhaps that's one place to start. Second is to see what the results of the turnaround plan are first, and then to try to figure out what that means in terms of the budget. So it's difficult prior to the fact to make those determinations, but after the fact, we'll take a look and see what we can do. The, the next district SMART Goal, number two, is focused at least for the, for this period of time at the middle school because the middle school is the one that is most dedicated, by virtue of its innovation plan, to project-based learning. And this is also one of the goals that has grown out of the ECLC study that's been taking place, that inter-district study between about six different districts. I know that Lynn has been involved and Greg and Patty Wegman and a few others as well. And the outcome of the project-based learning is to promote as much student engagement and excitement in their studies as much as possible. So that's what we would like to be able to accomplish, to give them a sense of a growth mindset and to promote as much of intrinsic motivation and confidence as we possibly can for our students. And, you know, how do you do that? Well, we get them off their duffs and we get them doing, and we have them going down to. to the aquaponics, and what we want to be able to do is to duplicate the kinds of activities and actions that the aquaponics bio lab provides and produces, and the building of bridges provides and produces, and the go-karts that go out on the track provides and produces. But we want to now be able to equilibrate that across as many of the subject areas as possible. That's not to suggest that the other subject areas are not doing PBL, project-based learning, but we want to take inventory, and we take a look at the action steps. We want to take inventory, we want to determine their alignment, both to the standards as well as to the core curriculum, because it's possible that somebody who's supposed to run out on the field to shortstop keeps going, goes out to left field, and we want to bring in shortstop if necessary. I hope you don't mind the baseball uniform, Mr. Gross. I don't like baseball.
You're big on baseball.
What do you mean, why? One of the exciting prospects also is the fact that the O'Malley Innovation Middle School wants to visit other schools that are PBL-based, like they are, learn with them and from them, and then to form partnerships as well, sharing information, possible sharing of ideas about professional development. Whether you're here on the island, or whether you're anywhere else, you need to get out and see what people are doing, and share and learn, and we can provide our information as well. So they will be doing that. And, and again, we want to strengthen the PBL strategies and practices within each of our departments, so that each time a student goes into class, within a relatively short period of time, they know they're going to be getting up, moving, learning, thinking, inquiring, and as active as we can possibly make them. Then, if I may, we go on to district SMART goal three. This is also an NCAS-based measurable goal, as is the student growth goal. The student growth goal was focused on the entire district. This is focused on the lowest-performing 20% of our students on NCAS. The basis for that, I think everybody knows, has to do with the change in the accountability system, where a much, much more weight is now being placed upon not just the main population, but also the lowest 20%, and we need to acknowledge that and to recognize it. So what we, what I put down as a goal is that the average composite scale score for the district's lowest-performing group will meet the 2018 targets. I don't know what the 2019 targets are, and if we don't make the 2019 targets, what we do want to see is improved, even if it says improve below target. In English, we're looking to score a 481.5, and math, a 475.3. In both instances, we were approximately three, three-point-something points below each of those. I can't give any guarantees that we're going to, that our students are going to meet these particular goals, but the point of this goal, and as it's translated to the district and to the schools, is that we need to place heavy concentration on meeting the needs of our, what probably are our most vulnerable students, and see what we can do to move the needle in terms of their overall performance. There is a litany of, you have a copy of the, of the goals, and there's a litany of goals at the elementary level, the middle school level, and the high school level. And some of the areas in common have to do with the strength of our interventions. Our capacity for progress monitoring means that you employ a particular intervention, and you measure it along the way to see if it's working or not. The use of data to drive instruction is exceptionally important. All three levels talked about using various online programs to supplement the curriculum in the classroom, and we cannot forget the social-emotional piece as well, which is what I'm referring to, the student-study processes. One of the things that we hope comes out of that is that we have a core set of actions that each, all schools can employ, because it makes sense. The, the work that I have listed here is the result of sitting down with the principals and asking them, what are we doing now, or what should we be doing in order to focus in on the 20%, you know, to strengthen our performance there? And those are some of the, the common areas, and again, to repeat, if there is a universal set of practices, a core, that each school is doing that makes sense, then we want to pursue that. And if certain schools are doing this, that, and the other in addition to supplement that, then, you know, they're doing so for reasons that they understand are necessary. So those are the proposed goals for 2019. Any questions?
I have a question. It's not about the goals, though, it's about the difference. Last year, we had discussed the vocational program, making those body goals, and the result of that conversation was that we were going to address the vocational program through the school improvement plan instead. I don't know what the, I don't, we never, I don't think we see the report back to here. I know we've heard a lot about the vocational program.
We've got a lot of reporting after the program subcommittee, and with the Coordinated Program Review, and the safety plan, there's been some...
No, 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 I know that that...
Some extraordinary work that's been done.
No, I know that there's been work done, but I mean, to improve enrollment in the program. So I'm just hoping, because we're not discussing it here, that that'll be part of the school improvement, that'll continue. I mean, this is the time of the year when all the kids are applying to the tech. I know I've gotten at least 10 phone calls for help, for kids to get into the tech. So when I hear how they want to go there, and yet we have space and hours, it's, it's a conversation we have to continue to have. So it would be helpful if at some point we can get some statistics back of what the enrollment was this year. I noticed the budget request for that department didn't increase. I mean, I think there was a $20,000 increase, but it wasn't, didn't have anything to do with...
It had to do with the lift cycle.
Still there's only, yeah.
There are some serious corrective measures that need to be taken.
So, I mean, there's no curriculum increase there or something, so I think maybe getting a report back to address my concerns there won't want me to push for a role here.
Yeah.
And it doesn't have to be now, I mean, it could be...
I hear the principal's comfortable and confident that he can place that into the school improvement plan.
Because we have the district improvement plan coming up.
Right.
And then the school improvement plan is following that, so...
Right, but I just, last year, we had the same conversation at the same time, and I just wanted to make sure that if we're not talking about any of the goals, that we'll be talking about it.
And if we can put a report together prior to, and report out to the school committee on the efforts that have been in our bid to get students more, more students enrolled in that vocational program, and we should do that for the year.
Do we know, are the names of those who applied to technical school shared with the high school, so they know who's interested in vocational programs?
But the guidance council isn't out, because they're part of the process. So would that information be helpful for the high school?
Do we know the names of students who have applied to? We have not received the output. The students who have applied, we have not received. Those students who have applied, we do work with O'Malley to identify students who are interested to attend a special event, and we're adding a layer to that this year by having parents come to, and students invite around the same time, to an open house at the high school, same night as the College and Career Fair. We'll be having scheduling help for upcoming parents in the library, and simultaneous to that, an open house in the vocational area with these identified students. In addition to meeting with them at O'Malley, we've also added a, something that's helped with, with some of our numbers in the two shops that are less well-subscribed, electrical and machine tech. We had an elective for the first half of the year in that area, where it's a kind of modified exploratory, and then students who remained interested rolled right into being first-year electrical one or first-year machine tech students, so that gained us another six kids into the program through, through that effort. So that was something we planned last year to do this year, and it, it bore fruit, and we have a couple, those other outreach that we're working on now. It would be helpful if there's a way to get that information of who has applied, that could be helpful to us.
I'll be here tomorrow.
Good work.
Are there any further questions?
Thank you, James.
The superintendent's goals.
So is the goal.
Yeah, we have to take a vote. So we need a motion to, I guess, accept the present page, goals as presented.
Submens?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Do you see any obstacles at this point? I mean, I...
To...
To meeting these goals, some words are...
Yeah, but you see...
I mean, it's good intentions. I just want to make sure that you can get there.
I don't, I, it's, it's, I don't necessarily expect district SMART goal three for the, for those numbers, for us to reach those numbers, but I think what's important is that we focus in on them, and that we concentrate on them, and that over time, over a year or two, or whatever, that, that effort is going to produce results.
Do you think maybe you should reward the goal a little bit, to say what you're trying to do, as opposed to sticking a number to it, and then it's going to either be met or not met, because that becomes an issue when we do your evaluation? You do have the opportunity to do the mid-cycle review if you see any problems and maybe change it, but I just want to make sure that you're confident and comfortable putting a number down.
Well, I think the school committee in turn also needs to recognize that, in, in part, that this is not literal, although there are some people who take these things literally, but it's aspirational as well, and that, you know...
I agree.
We need to know that, we need to move forward, and this is a, this is a measuring stick that says to what extent we have or have not. And if we haven't quite reached that goal, we've made some progress, we've made significant progress, if that shows up on my evaluation, I'll live with it. But more importantly is that the, the district has that laser focus that's designed to help these kids.
No, I agree with the number, and I'm glad that was your response, so, thank you.
Any further discussion? Paul, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Get your hands. And we move on to... What's next?
I think it's most popular.
Oh, the silver ten and three four.
That's it?
That's it?
I don't know what, Lynn, I'm glad you're here, just getting ready to leave, but we just this Friday have applied for a Community Health Needs Assessment Grant. We've submitted a letter of intent. We were first introduced the idea by Karen Carroll, who is the Director of the Department of Public Health, and specifically, what we're trying to do is to have a study conducted that would do two things. One, provide us with avenues whereby we can increase our direct services during the day for students with mental health issues. And perhaps more importantly, establish the means for creating a network with community services, so that we can directly communicate and provide wraparound services in the shortest, most efficient period of time in order to meet the needs of these particular kids. O'Malley currently has the Leahy Behavioral Health Service Student Assistance Program. On the, a letter of intent, did you mention about 30 or so students are...
Yes.
Approximately 30 students are attended to through that health program. Considering some of the emotional, socio-emotional issues and concerns that we have at the middle school and elsewhere, more is better. So if we can conduct a study that will help us to identify the logistics and how we can increase our direct services and create this coordination with outside community agencies and networks, it will be time well spent. We've applied for the grant, it's about $15,000, is what we've asked for. Item number two, I was going to report out on some more specifics, but because of the weather yesterday, the wellness committee met, and the folks that were going to come and talk about the mandatory breakfast after the bell, and being the veterans due to the weather and driving and stuff, they didn't come. But I've already reported out that the state now mandates any school that has 60% or more students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch are now required to serve breakfast after the bell, after the tardy bell, and so on and so forth. These folks were going to come in and talk about particular models. Some models may call for students, once school starts, to have them then go to the cafeteria in order to arrange for their breakfasts. Others are the, where the breakfast comes to them through some mechanism into the classroom. Considering the time on learning and the numbers of where we're at, I have my own partiality with respect to which of those particular models we should be employing, but, you know, it's important to hear what they have to say. Wellness Committee will be meeting on February 28th, and my hope, expectation is that those agencies, those reps will come out and discuss those models with us. The, just as an FYI, the police chief finalist interviews are taking place February 25th and 26th. The mayor has asked department managers to spend some time, ask some questions, engage in some conversation with the two finalists, and I thank you, Mayor, and an opportunity to sit in on these, and look forward to seeing who our, our next police chief is going to be, what the relationship of the police department with the school department, with our memorandum of understanding, and with a lot of the coordination of some of the things we spoke about earlier. So we'll see what happens with that. Item number four has to do with the, the 2018 school and district report cards are now published and available from the Department of Ed. They, they sent them out electronically last week. Sent them out simply means that there is now a website, which I will be providing to the district, where parents, guardians, anyone who's interested can go to a particular school or district, click on it, and they can then also click on the particular language. There are umtine languages now on the website, so that it immediately is translated for folks whose, whose English is not their primary language. And then there's a series of, I'll demonstrate this for you, maybe next to the school committee meeting, but there are a series of frequently asked questions, and then the, who's ever inquiring, they click on it, and the charts, and the graphs, and everything comes up. And if they want even more detailed information, there's a click that you can then go to the next window and buy that information. So I'll probably, we'll send those out over vacation, another chance to put my letter together and set it up, and it'll go out to families. We are required to do this. Any district that receives Title I funds is obligated by state law to send out these, to mail these district report cards. Last, the request for special education funding. On February 6th, the Coalition for Special Education Funding presented at the State House advocating for full funding for Circuit Breaker for FY20. Theoretically, full funding is supposed to be at 75%. If any cost for an out-of-district student that is four times the per pupil state spending average, anything above that, we're supposed to receive 75% reimbursement of that. This current year, the reimbursement rate is at 72.
Correct.
We will probably be budgeting at 68, in case, because the year before, I believe, was at 68, so we'll be as conservative as possible. There was a signed statement by over 220 superintendents asking for the legislature to support a full, or at least 72% support for the Circuit Breaker. I signed on to it as well, and in order, the governor, who, as I had reported out last time, has increased some funding based upon the Foundation Budget Review Commission, although to the district, it's another $62,000, which isn't going to do much. They're also saying that, although he has made some advances, the proposed funding for Circuit Breaker is still $30,000 short of what's actually needed, and that the overall appropriation needs to be at $353 million. So I have, and I believe it's in your packet, put together a letter to Representative Ferrante at the Tar, asking that he support any bills that will promote a full funding of the Circuit Breaker.
That's it?
The page is blanked.
Any questions, the superintendent?
I hope that we approve the superintendent's report.
Second.
Paul, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Tina Hemmels? We'll move on to committee reports. And first up is Program Subcommittee of February 17th, and Chairperson Kathy Klein. Do you have an action item coming?
I don't think so.
No.
Not a program.
Policy, first reading of the...
First reading of policy.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Where is this? Let's wait. So we, as Dr. Sapphire showed you, with respect to the O'Malley Bio Lab, Corey McGrew has met with the principals...
So we, as Dr. Sapphire showed you with respect to the O'Malley Biolab, Court of Rue has met with the principals, the leadership team to start getting on their schedules to find out about events he thinks he should be promoting, feel-good stories that he'll push through social media. So that would basically our public relations update, that, you know, anything to put the district in a positive light and to get good news, happy news out there so people can share it and be proud of our schools. We had a lengthy, well, not lengthy, but we had a, Mr. Barr informed us what's going on in terms of health education, so we had all the curriculum laid out on all sorts of, mostly on substance abuse and focusing on that particular area of health education. And his suggestion was getting Rosa Brances from the high school to come present to the school committee if everybody would find that helpful to hear from, from her as to what education's happening at the high school. I think this information will be helpful for us to understand if there are gaps and/or other things we can be doing to reach high schoolers as they progress through high school and as a refresher on food choices and healthy choices and saying no to the bad stuff that's out there, which I think is probably important given that we're going to have recreational marijuana being sold in our backyard, so, and more access to that stuff. So I think the educational piece is going to be important to make sure what we're doing, we're comfortable with, and that we have adequate funding to do all that we want to do. So, anybody have thoughts on having her come?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay.
Makes sense. I mean, it was, I think it's come up in conversation with this committee of what's going on.
We talked about receiving credits at Gloucester High School specifically for the Gloucester Biotech Academy Summer Camp. And Principal Cook was there to say that it would be handled in a same way as other internships and time kids spent to get extra credits at the high school. So that was good news and hopefully we'll promote the heck out of their summer program to get a lot of kids, both even at the middle school, because I know there's certain ages at middle school that can participate as well and even kids that have graduated. So, so maybe that would get more kids willing to give up a week in the summer for something educational, let's hope. Health and wellness policy, we did not meet as a group, as Dr. Sapphire said, so we are meeting right after students come back from vacation. So we'll discuss both the breakfast, we'll probably come forward as a recommendation, as well as the high school, school store. We didn't get a chance to discuss that either. Okay? High school start time, the report on that is, I think we made a motion for the subcommittee. Do we want to make that to the full committee? But anyway, we may have, the, the general consensus was that until other districts within our conference and area do anything significant to change start time and until there is information coming out of the state on their study of later start times, we put that on hold again until there's more information with which to make an informed decision.
Yeah, so I think that would just.
So we kind of just, yeah, kept to that subcommittee.
Yep.
And then the last item is school choice acceptance policy and the timeline. Would you want to introduce that?
Yes, there, there have been some concerns about the timing or even the basis for requests for school choice, inter-district school choice. We've had at least one incident, incident's not the right word, we've had one application where a particular student had a very, very dubious record in terms of behavior, stuff that we would not want to have in our building if we could help it. There's also the, the academic issue of if students are going to be coming in, are they going to be able to pick up on English, math, science and social studies? If it's the third quarter of the year and they're asking for choice, that's a bit of a problem. So we contacted Michael Joyce, our special education attorney, who's familiar with some of these topics, and he's provided us with some language for a, for your review over the, a couple of reads. And I think specifically item number four begins to address some of our concerns. Where is this thing? Excuse me. Which, that says that an application for school choice may be denied based on safety concerns or attendance and/or a record of serious discipline problems within the non-resident district. And I think that's, in particular, the high school was what they are looking for. Again, this came from Attorney Joyce. He feels that it is appropriate and relevant within the law itself. And, and then item number seven refers to that generally, applications for school choice must be submitted prior to the beginning of the school year for which the student is seeking admission. A late application may be accepted in the discretion of school administration, but applications will not be accepted after the first quarter of the school year, which was also a request coming from the high school. So this gives us a little bit of control. If a student's been tossed out of one school, goes to another school, and then there's a very serious infraction, we want to be able to say that we're not prepared to accept a school choice student.
So, just to be clear, this is, is this an official first reading or is this simply? And would require a second reading?
Yes, it is policy, so we do require.
Is it a legal policy?
It's a legal policy.
So I happen to print out as a policy because what I read and what I found today were two different things, so I asked the policy what it says, what's our current policy?
About, this is our policy above policies?
Yeah, it's the policy policy. Because I had found something different the other day and I think I was looking at an older version of the policy manual. I went online this morning and thought that's.
Okay. This is our policy, yes, a lot. Adoption of new policies or changing existing policies is solely responsible with the school committee. Policies will be adopted and/or amended only by the term of vote of the majority of the members of the school committee when such action has been scheduled on the agenda of a regular or special meeting. To permit time, to permit time for study of all policies or amendments to policies and to provide an opportunity for interested parties to react. Proposed policies or amendments would be presented as an agenda item to the committee in the following sequence. One, discussion item. The first reading of proposed policy or policies' response from superintendent, report from advisory subcommittee, assigned responsibility in the area and committee discussion and direction for any redrafting. And then two, an action item, second reading, discussion, adoption or rejection. Amendments to the policy in the action stage will not require repetition of the sequence unless the committee so directs. School committees may dispense with the above sequence to meet emergency conditions. Policies will be effective upon the date set by the school committee, the date will ensure that affected persons have the opportunity to become familiar with the requirements of new policy provided in implementation. So, so this is a first reading and this is, this is for proposed policy. And. No.
You spoke that it's the first reading?
We did vote that we have accepted that, that we've gotten the first reading essentially and we actually take the action because of the second reading. Okay? That's pretty much what the policy is. So, what was the committee's opinion?
Oh, the committee, we recommended that, the full committee, that we adopt this policy. Yeah.
And, and the superintendent's position is?
I concur.
And the high school's opinion?
In favor.
I was just going to say, we have a middle school principal there too. I mean, would there be situations where after the first quarter you would want the leeway to accept?
I was going to bring that up too.
I think.
Because the situations I've experienced that are mid-year are kids who are, have moved out. So that's a situation where we might be willing to, where we have a kid who's been in school as a Gloucester resident and then, you know, the family moves and they want to stay, so they choice it.
I thought if they start the school year, they can stay down the school year, can they not be?
Yes.
They can, but it has to be a formal request.
And then they would apply, I would assume, for the following year as well if they wanted to continue, which this policy would allow.
Right.
So a late application may be accepted in the, in the discretion of the school administration. So a late application, there's a date for applications that have to be submitted, I can correct this? And, newly in July 1st. So what this, so it doesn't say, yeah, I know it was number seven, late application may be accepted. How late? I guess it's my, does, I mean, does this mean that it can be accepted in August or does it mean it can be accepted, but it can't be accepted in, after the first quarter?
Correct.
Correct?
Both are correct. As I reasoned.
So that's what it means. It's up to the discretion of the, the administration up until the, after the end of the first quarter and after that, there's not, no chance.
So it sounds like we want language that basically says except for students who are moving, except for students already enrolled who may have to, five, seven.
What? I mean, I, I find that a little, you're, you're basically negotiating against yourself when you say that you will not accept an application. I mean, I think you should leave yourself the room to be able to say, you know, you may have a situation that comes up, you know, that a kid wants to come in due to a certain set of circumstances and it's a child that you would be happy to have, that you don't want to have to say, I can't take you because the policy says it. So I would change that will to "may."
Yeah, I think the difficulty, I mean, I would, Dr. Sapphire, I would recommend Michael having, Michael Joyce again having a look at that because there are issues around choice, you know, that are, you know, that we can't be, are, you know, can it be, could it be seen as a potential applicant as arbitrary and capricious for us to accept this student but not that student unless there are those substantial concerns that are documented in number four? Do you know, would we be leaving ourselves open for some difficulties if we had a completely open discretion policy?
We already did that with the, a late application may be accepted discretion of.
Right, but that's within a bound period. I wonder, I, I don't want to speculate, my, well, that does have a bound period, right? It's, the lateness is bound. So I don't know if the attorney made the determination that a completely open policy would be seen as allowing us to, you know, pick and choose, which, and my understanding is the, the law does not allow for.
Right.
So, I don't know, but that's my speculation and so I would recommend that if the committee want, you know, were interested, you know, I see what you're saying, Tony, but I would think that we would want to sort of look into that.
This just being the first reading, we can ask for, ask Mr. Joyce to weigh in on what the facts, what the issues might be around changing.
It has to be the word. You can't say, well, I'll take a good kid versus the bad kid.
Well, no. I think it's not say that.
Yeah, you can't pick and choose, you have to say what we're allowed, what we can do and what we have the qualifications to do.
That argues for applicants will not be accepted in the first quarter.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just thinking that maybe a family situation that could arise that would, that might, you might want to make an exception for.
Or a safety situation in the child's home school.
So many schools do have deadlines, you know, that's, that's one finding, it's absolute deadlines. Of course, for choice, for obvious planning purposes. We've found that as, as a district, you know, that the idea of the first term is we do find that students in area schools discover that, you know, it's not as good a fit, they discover the student isn't finding a program that is, you know, beneficial to them, they decide they want a vocational program or they want something we offer that the other school that they've gone to in the area doesn't offer. And usually that's discovered within the first quarter, right? That's what, that idea gives them an opportunity for a long enough attempt to be in that school and then they're making an informed decision. Often, situations after that tend to be of more of a crisis or an emergency situation where there's a, a big problem at the school that they're leaving and then we're inheriting that problem. In the middle of the year without the resources allocated or planned for that school.
So I also heard the issue that if somebody's in the district and they move out, that would be a reasonable exception.
Right, to keep them in.
But it's all within our policy, if you start the school year, I mean, in, in a school, you, you have the right to stay there for the remainder of the year if your parents move, right? So, and this is talking about the next year? But then they would have to apply for school choice?
Yes.
Okay, so we, to follow the policy, I think what we need to do is vote to move it on to a second reading at our next meeting with, with the information that we have requested obtained.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tina Harris. And we will move on to our personnel segment.
Personnel met this past Monday. The agenda was pretty much the same agenda as I reported out on, at our last meeting. However, we looked at a couple more things in more detail and came out with two action items. So the first topic was staff absentee report. So as you know, we had been, from a budgetary perspective, looking at the substitute line on the budget and noticed that it's been increasing, so we took an in-depth look at what was going on with absences. We received some information from administration, given some detail into what types of absences there are, what the percentages are across the district and what percentages are across the whole. I don't know if anyone is interested in hearing these numbers, I did bring some up last time, but I have that information available if you would like to see it.
Everybody got it with the background?
Yeah, we did take an in-close look to, we have thirty-six teachers that have been out of work for more than ten sick days, so we just looked to see what was going on with those teachers and the reasons why they were out. Just got a better understanding of what was going on and the data that we reported on, these ten, these teachers were taken out of the overall data so that it didn't bring the whole district down because they were obviously out for some serious reasons. The next topic we discussed was a request for an increase in salary. In our tech department, we had Grant Harris come forward and make a good argument to give his coworker, Tyler?
Oh, Tyler's gone.
Tyler's gone.
Brendan.
It's Brendan. Brendan, Brendan. Brendan, an increase in his salary, he is going to be taking on a lot more job responsibilities. There's some big jobs coming across our district that's going to require additional hours. The salary increase is for approximately eight thousand dollars, if I have that correct?
No, sixty-five.
Oh, sixty-five hundred. they have a line item in their budget for internships. So what he wants to do is transfer the money out of the internship account and put it into Brendan's salary, knowing that Brendan's going to be looking, taking on more responsibility, both hour-wise and work-wise. So the recommendation out of the subcommittee was to recommend to the full committee to increase the salary of the IT operations manager, as we just discussed, in the increase of $6,500.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Just one thing of note, that the account for the internship will be zeroed out going forward at one point. We did not, this was supposed to be taken up BNF, I don't know if we want to table it until next week, or if we want, whether it's up to now. I mean, I heard, you know, the money's in our budget. It was to pay for another position. Brendan's taking over those duties, and we'll take them over from here on forward, so, and that intern position would have been also in our budget next year, so it's not an increase ongoing.
I still want to see the job description, the actual title's never enough, I can't...
There is no extra title. It's more hours.
Actually, I want to see the job description. Well, more hours, well, we all work a lot of more hours. I want to see, you know, I have to see the job, I have to see this in detail.
Like, as Tony said, it's supposed to come in.
Come in BNF, and that's where, that's where that would all end up.
Well, that's right. I said, "I'm not going in tonight. You put it through in BNF, and I'll come look at it."
Yes, we can take it.
Yeah. I don't feel like it just came in front of me tonight to vote on it.
We looked at it from a personnel perspective, not so much a budgetary impact, and we felt that Grant made the case.
You can't say, right, this year it's not on your budget, because he's not going to get the intern. But what happens, "Oh, I need, all the school needs all the IT. We're working this, we're putting this in, now we need an intern." I'd like to see it in the budget. I'd like to see it in budget by this moment.
So you have to see where it is now, and where it would have been, and where it is in next year, so.
Yeah, that's what I need to see.
We discussed on that.
Without objection, we will table this, we refer this, well, it had been referred to BNF, but BNF didn't meet last week.
Right, that's why I've never been here.
So that's, that was the problem with that. That's why it's here, but it's not here.
And it'll come up right after we get to vacation, because we meet again in two weeks.
So we will table this in for two weeks. And anything else?
Yep, so our final discussion revolved around the fact that we have advertised for an assistant principal position down at the high school, I mean, Hillmealy, and personnel subcommittee is charged with coming up with a salary range, not necessarily for the posting, but to allow for the hiring of this position. And we had two discussions on this, not only at our meeting on Monday, but the prior meeting, and we looked at salaries from areas that are in our DART, salaries that are pretty close to us, and salaries of schools that were similar to us in makeup. And what we decided was, a motion came out of the committee, subcommittee, to approve the salary range of the middle school assistant principal in the amount of $88,000 up to $95,000, a nice remove.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, what was it now, the range?
Ninety-two and five.
Well, we have someone coming in for five years that's in that same range.
But when you're, when, these are non-union positions, and so that, we're just, we're supposed to develop a range so that the superintendent can negotiate with them.
Oh, yeah, we did that, it's the same thing with this here.
So that's all this is, the range.
And just so you know, it's on the lower side compared to what some other schools are doing. Not the lowest, but it's in range with, like I said, schools that are our size and that are in our DART, meaning similar financial. But there are schools that hired a lot higher, but we kept it in the lower side.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A present. It's an air in the snow, it's not, it's not a five in favor, and one present.
And that's the end of my report.
Okay, and BNF did not meet because of the weather last night, and so we'll move on to our action items. First item is Gloucester Education Foundation grant in the amount of $75,000 for the Veterans Elementary School transportation cost to the Kanan Historical Museum.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
We've been eyeing it on there.
Put it to budget finance next week, I'll know about it.
Is there any further serious discussion? We will be going into executive session later on to discuss the tenant agreement with bus monitors, and you will, after we come out of executive session, we will vote publicly to accept that, or not accept it, one or the other. We've already approved the IT director, we've already approved the range, we're gonna move on to discussions. Massachusetts School Building Authority Project update. The committee met last week, I wasn't here, so, somebody who was wanted to say what happened.
Well, it was more or less a filling in for the entire committee as to what the working groups are doing. There were two working groups, one is in educational leadership, and one is a working group. The educational leadership is talking about the programmatic needs of the building and how that's going to relate to the space. And we even spent some time at a meeting yesterday where the principals in particular were moving circles and squares around to just get a sense of the alignment of what possible configuration the building might have, where the gym might be, where the public spaces are, where the academic wing could be, where OT is, PT, starting to really move things around based upon our programmatic needs. The second group is the working group, and they are looking at the work that needs to be done on the East Gloucester site, the Veterans site, and the Green Street site as well. And there are issues that Jonathan can elaborate much more on with respect to clear title for the parcels within those three areas and stuff, and we could ask the city to define the titles to, the deeds to those particular parcels.
The issue here is that all of the sites are made up of multiple sites. East Gloucester site is made up of the school site, as well as the Parsons playground. Veterans is made up of Meadows Field and the school site. And Green Street is made up of twenty-three separate...
Twenty-one, twenty-three.
Twenty-one, twenty-three separate parcels, some of which may have restrictions on them. Some of the Meadows Field and the Parsons Field may have restrictions on them. So the thing we have to do is do a title search. That information's not available in the assessors' office. And so we have to go, have to, so we've asked the city to have that, and I believe they are in the process of doing it. So we can't really proceed on doing any, you don't want to do geotechnical drilling on a site that you don't have a clear title to. So this is the first bump in the road that we need to clear before we can do the next thing. So also, we had a meeting last night, my meeting, excuse me, at East Gloucester with the East Gloucester PTO, it was not, I think there were about eight parents there. Michelle Rogers did a very thorough and informative presentation, and we'll be meeting with the Veterans PTO on the twenty-fifth, and it will be the same presentation. But ultimately, the message that we carried to the parents was that we're in, just in the very early process of determining feasibility of the three sites for many different options. The MSBA requires us to look at East Gloucester as a renovation, as a renovation and addition for a standalone East Gloucester school or a combined school, also to look at it as a tier-down and new building for a standalone East Gloucester arc. So there's, right there, there's six options that have to be looked at. And then we have to look at Veterans out in, as a renovation, two options there, renovation or a new site, and then we have to look at Green Street as, simply as a, as a new site for standalone, as a new site for, so there's all these things that MSBA's gonna make us look at before we even have a discussion which is the best option. So that's where we're at, and so it's gonna be a long process, and there'll be plenty of opportunities for input as we go along.
Let's actually update a little bit, too. We did, some of us on the committee were able to tour a few elementary schools. We went to Newburyport, Newton, and Lexington. Yeah, to see schools that are, you know, newer schools, although I think West Paris is newer than all of them, right? Open later than them. Just to see what different things they employed in terms of how they arranged their schools. And it was particularly interesting in that they have a very, very tiny site that has as many kids or more than we do in this very small condensed building. Everything felt a little smaller, but they, and no parking hardly at all on their site. So anyway, it was just interesting to see different schools, where Lexington School was much roomier, more country setting. So it gave, I think, the principals in particular, who've been existing in their crowded, cramped places with things in the hall, a perspective on kind of the newer things that were out there. So that was interesting. And then also, when we had our meeting, we had a bunch of neighbors from the Green Street area that were concerned about where the project was headed, and I think a couple people there did a pretty good job of explaining where we're at and what we have to look at in terms of process, and where, I think they thought certain things had been decided. So I think it calmed some of the concerns, and we told them about posting and how our meetings get posted, and that they're public meetings, and what the regular schedule is. So hopefully, they'll spread the word to people that might be concerned in that area.
Anything else? Any questions? Preschool location, and we should probably add Jim Plour onto this. We have been informed just this week that Doran Woody are in the process of looking at both of those issues, and we'll be coming up with recommendations.
Several members of the committee, the only committee here, mislabeled in the minutes.
Several members of the committee.
Yeah, you can look at it later.
Oh, okay.
Some of them are even on the public committee.
Yeah, okay.
Next time you approve minutes, look at the membership.
Yeah, I wasn't there. We've already done the, oh, we've got a notice from the nurses, Massachusetts Nurse Association, that it commends negotiations. And we've already done a school choice policy. Is there any other items anybody would like to bring up for discussion?
I have a new item. I was going through the policy manual today, looking for our policy on policy. I came across the core requirements. When I say me at the court, we got notice in October that the core law changed a little bit.
What?
The core check, background check. In our current policy, which is ADDA-E-2, it says that we require a five-year look back, and I believe the law just changed to three. So I'm gonna give this to you to give to Naomi and see if it does affect our policy, and if so, we'll have to amend it, and if it doesn't, then we don't have to do anything.
We have to ask, or can we get a free opinion from NASC?
You can either one, yeah. But I put the language there that I received to show, and then that's the policy. So I figured you can report back to us at some point if we need to do that or not.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. We will be going into executive session for the purpose of discussing the tenant agreement with the bus monitors. We will come out of executive session only to vote the recommendation of the executive session in public, so, and then adjourn. So thank you all for coming. We'll take a five-minute recess.
I'm hoping we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the tenant agreement with the bus monitors.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Your ticket.
Yep.
Dr. Blancy?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Yes.
So we'll have a five-minute recess.